Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Riska. Can we please have the roll call? Here.
Here.
Present.
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 Here.
Present.
Thank you, council. We need approval of the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanis.
I'd like to have Item D from the consent agenda pulled from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Please.
We'll take Consent Agenda Item 9D. We'll make it Consideration Item 10C. Counsel, any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to remind everyone that in recognition of the Martin Luther King Holiday, on Monday, January 17th, city offices will be closed, so please duly note that. However, this will not affect our refuse collection schedule. And also, the Sterling Heights Public Library will be celebrating Martin Luther King Junior Day with a display in the lobby of our library, providing an overview of Dr. King's life and contributions, and will highlight biographical material for all ages. So we encourage folks to stop into the library and take a good look at the display, which will certainly be educational and informative. And also, I wanted to remind residents that you can still set out your Christmas trees. You'll be able to do that through the month of January, and the program runs through February 2nd. After that, you will not be able to set the trees out at the curb, so I think we'll be able to get them all covered by February 2nd. And also, at the conclusion of tonight's agenda, I'm requesting that the city council convene a closed session pursuant to Sections 8H and 8E of the Open Meetings Act for councils to consult with the city attorney regarding a confidential written legal opinion and trial or settlement strategy in connection with Macomb County Circuit Court Case Number 20-00308-NI. And I wanted to close on this note, if I can draw your attention to the screen in front of you. Some of you may have already seen this article in today's Free Press, but I wanted to highlight it for a couple of reasons. So the title is "10 Metro Detroit Cities Had the Biggest Home Sale Surges of 2021." And not surprisingly, Sterling Heights led the pack. Number one, 31% increase in home sales. And when you look at the other cities on the list, we're in good company there. So I wanted to highlight it for a couple of reasons. First, the city of Sterling Heights continues to grow in population, continues to be a focal point, a destination place for people across not only southeastern Michigan, the state, and the Midwest. And there's many reasons for that. First, we have great schools. It goes without saying. We have two fabulous public school districts serving Sterling Heights, but we also have a very high-end parochial school system as well that serves our community. Needless to say, we have great services in the community, especially as we enter the snow plowing season. We excel in that area, so thankfully, we haven't had to do neighborhood streets yet, but that day is coming. We certainly have low taxes. I think most homeowners in the city would agree with that. We have plentiful jobs, 60,000 jobs in Sterling Heights, and many of those are high-paying jobs, high-tech engineering jobs that really have grown over the years because of our high-tech manufacturing. The city's certainly inclusive, welcoming. And of course, we'll be talking about that on our agenda this evening. And now, one of the most diverse cities in the state of Michigan, something to be really proud of. And the city's invested millions in quality-of-life services, attracting young residents and families like never before. And that goes without saying. These are tangible quality-of-life improvements, all of our park systems, our bike hike trails, the skate park, the ice rink, and so on. Dodge Park alone. And when I mention Dodge Park, it reminds me of a conversation I had earlier today in talking with an employee at a nearby business, and he mentioned to me that his grandparents live in Sterling Heights, and they really love it here, and that he and his spouse are thinking of moving and buying a home in Sterling Heights. And I asked him, why is he considering Sterling Heights out of over so many other places? And he said, in large part because of the recreational amenities that have been constructed and built out over recent years. And this is a young, I'm guessing he was maybe in his late twenties. So these efforts are paying off anecdotally when we hear these stories, but they're paying off in tangible numbers that you see before you. So I wanted to highlight this. Many of you may have seen it, but it's just one more example of really good leadership. And again, I commend the mayor and the city council for taking the lead on many of these investments over recent years that are clearly paying big dividends. And so that concludes my report this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. That's very good news indeed, and good segue into our next topic. But before we get there, I can't help but notice that even when talking about how our property values are going up, and we have the highest number of new house sales, you weave in the snow plowing services into that. I know that favors you. Also, I want to recognize County Commissioner Joe Romano, who's here with us today, another reason why so many people are moving into Sterling Heights, the good government, not just at the city level, but at the county level. Mr. Romano, always a pleasure to see you. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Langloy, Kyle Langloy, and this is a public hearing to consider adoption of a proposed Parks and Recreation and Non-Motorized Master Plan for 2022 through 2026. As I said, we have presentations from our Parks and Recreation Director Kyle Langloy and Senior Project Manager from Wade Trim, Adam Young. Mr. Langloy or Mr. Young, whoever wants it first.
I'll take it first, Mayor Taylor. Thank you for having us, members of council and all gathered here tonight. Thank you for being here. This evening, I sit before you in an effort to cross the finish line of completion of the Parks, Recreation, and Non-Motorized Five-Year Master Plan, which is developed as a guide for the Parks and Recreation Department to follow over the five-year period of coverage. This process began over 15 months ago, and as you can guess, I'm happy to see the final steps being finalized tonight and over the next month. The last master plan was developed in and around the same time as the Recreating Recreation Initiative was unfolding. And in turn, that was a plan that resulted in a high level of completion from the Community Improvement Plan. While we undoubtedly transformed our community over the past five years, I am again eager to move our city forward in the realm of recreation, using this snapshot of our department's standing and a number of new goals to achieve. I'm joined tonight by Adam Young, Senior Project Manager from Wade Trim. Wade Trim was selected through a rigorous RFP process to complete our last master plan, and in turn was uniquely positioned to compile this new plan as a follow-up to what we were able to achieve through Recreating Recreation and our last master plan. They've done a fantastic job, both with the last plan and certainly guiding us through the compilation of this current plan that's in front of you tonight for consideration and public hearing. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Young to provide a high-level overview of the master plan that is the subject again of our public hearing and item for your consideration.
Good evening, everyone. So I want to spend just a few minutes kind of giving a summary of the Parks, Recreation, and Non-Motorized Master Plan for the benefit of those in the audience who are listening at home, and of course, for the members of council and the mayor here this evening. So I wanted to share the purpose of the plan. Kyle had mentioned that this is really following the success of the Recreating Recreation Program that was launched in 2016 and the city's last five-year Parks and Recreation Plan. And it really enabled the implementation of a large number of those projects that were recommended in the prior five-year plan. We want to, again, continue that momentum forward and looking at additional investments and improvements to our Parks, Recreation, and Non-Motorized System in the city. The purpose of the plan, it serves as a guide and a decision-making document for the city, for the Parks and Recreation Department. It's important to note that the five-year action plan, the plan for future improvements, it's not set in stone. It does not commit the city to any particular projects. It is intentionally ambitious. There's a laundry list of proposed improvement projects there, and it seeks to position the city to be able to seek and secure funding through the state of Michigan. That is one of the purposes of the plan, to ensure that the city is grant-eligible through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, so that when opportunities arise, the city would be able to apply and hopefully secure funding through the state. That eligibility is secured if this plan is approved through December 31st of 2026. Some of the considerations that went into this plan in order to create that action strategy over the next five years, we started with an existing facilities inventory, cataloging the progress made and a lot of the improvements that were made over the last five years. We considered accessibility for all individuals, making sure that we provide greater access to outdoor programming and facilities and other recreation pursuits, to ensure that all citizens and individuals have greater access to those facilities and programs. We looked at the non-motorized assessment. We looked at sidewalk gaps and things of that nature. We looked at what are other entities? What are our neighbors doing? What is the county doing in terms of planning for non-motorized trail systems? We looked at recreation trends. We compared what do we have in place currently versus national standards versus state standards as it relates to how many, you know, for a city of this size, what does the standard say in terms of how many acreage of parkland should you have? What types of facilities should be in place? What types of amenities at parks should be in place? What are the trends occurring, you know, across the nation over the last one year, five years, in terms of what facilities are more in demand versus others? As I said, we looked at the plans and initiatives of our neighbors of the region of the state. For example, the Iron Bell Trail and the state's drive over the last number of years to get that trail, that statewide trail system in place. We're advantageously located in Sterling Heights as part of the trail route for the Iron Bell Trail. And certainly, we engaged the public to see what ideas, opportunities, needs that they have and what would they like to see moving forward. One of the very successful methods of engaging the public was an online citizen survey. We were really happy with the response. We had over 900 responses to the citizen survey, which points to the interest in recreation in the city. I think it also really points to the success of the Recreating Recreation Program. Maybe people hearing about the survey engage with the Recreation Department on the listserv, sees an item like this, like, oh, yeah, I want to speak up and share my thoughts about recreation in the city. Overall, we found a very positive response to the survey in terms of, you know, the job that the city is currently doing in providing recreation to its citizens. When respondents were asked, how was Sterling Heights doing in terms of the job of providing recreation to the city? And 85, over 85% of respondents said the city is doing an excellent or good job of providing recreation. We also engaged the public through focus group discussions. We had a number of topics there identified on screen, and so we met. These were conducted virtually, so we identified and actually reached out to the public and said, hey, who's interested in participating in these focus group discussions? And if you are interested, let us know what topics of are of most interest to you. And so we found those folks who were interested in participating, reached out to them, met with them virtually. We also met with the teen, we met with a teen group. We actually did this one in person at a Sterling Heights Youth Advisory Board meeting. And so we met with those folks in person. We wanted to make sure to get some opinions and thoughts and feedback from our younger population. The action program is the key component of the five-year Parks and Recreation Plan. In addition to a set of goals and guidelines that would, that the city can look to in moving forward over the next five years, it actually has a schedule of proposed improvements to parks facilities, to trails facilities. And at all city parks, every city park is proposed to have some sort of improvement or enhancement. Some of the new amenities proposed at all city parks are items like picnic tables and benches and bike racks. There are some significant improvements proposed at certain city parks, such as new athletic courts, trail loops, parking lot rehabilitation, or repaving. We do have proposed some targeted land acquisition sites for either conservation purposes or for proposed development of future neighborhood parks. Some of the non-motorized improvements proposed in the plan include sidewalk gaps or side path gaps, essentially making sure that we have connections and eliminating those gaps in the system. Looking to, again, improve and enhance the Iron Bell Trail route through the city. Shared use trail extensions are proposed. As you can see on this map, it's maybe it's a little bit hard to see, but you can see the dash lines there. Looking to connect neighborhoods with destinations such as parks and schools and business districts. And signage and safety enhancements, such as new trail crossings or mid-block crossings to improve safety and access to parks and non-motorized facilities. The schedule, this draft plan has been, there was a notice in place, and the draft plan has been available for public inspection over the last month. It's been on the city website since that time for anyone to view and download. Tonight is the public hearing, so the DNR requires that communities, before they would adopt a Parks and Recreation Plan, hold a public hearing. So this is kind of the final opportunity for public input in the planning process that's being held tonight. And then we are asking or requesting that you would consider the plan for adoption this evening. And ultimately, what we would like to do is submit this plan, have it adopted, and submit it to the DNR by February 1st. Again, that would ensure that we'd be eligible to apply for grants even this year at the next cycle of potential grant opportunities through the DNR. So I'm going to turn it back over to Kyle.
As you can see, we again have gone through quite an extensive process, some unique opportunities to solicit feedback from our residents. We're excited for the plan that's in front of everybody today for consideration and public hearing, and I look forward to comments and certainly answering any questions that, Mayor, you, council, or the community may have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Langloy, Mr. Young. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Not, I'll close the public hearing. And council, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sirovsky.
Thank you. We have resolved to adopt the Parks, Recreation, and Non-Motorized Master Plan for the period 2022 to 2026.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Sirovsky?
Just a little bit, very briefly, Mayor Taylor. Thank you. I just wanted to say that I do think this is a great step in the right direction or continued step in the right direction, because we are certainly needing to adapt other ways of transportation and improve our modes, other modes other than motorized vehicles. And I really do appreciate all of the hard work that's gone into this. I do think that, especially with this grant being able to, or this proposal being able to allow us to receive grants sooner, more than later. And I'm a big proponent of grants to fund things. It's not necessarily free money, but it is certainly an opportunity for us to get the best bang for our buck. So I have, I'm very pleased to see this, and I'm very much in support of that. Thank you, Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Mrs. Sirovsky. Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, since I have Kyle here, I read this report. It's excellent. It really does set out the future of parks in Sterling Heights and the work that we have to do and the work we're trying to get funding for. And it has some of the stuff that we really want to do, but it's more pie in the sky, like the Bridge Over Kleino, which hopefully will happen, but at this point, we don't have the money for at this current time. But just briefly, looking through it, I had a couple of questions that hopefully you could answer for me. This last year, especially when I was knocking doors, I had a lot of questions about the third entrance to Magnolia Park. I know that we've spoken about this before. I was wondering if you could give me an update on that and see, are we going to take back the sidewalk, or is there a plan to? Because right now, residents, for those who don't know at home, are forced to kind of go through a muddy, not our property, kind of between two properties, to get into the back door of Magnolia Park. And when I knocked doors in that neighborhood, it was a constant refrain from residents there that they wanted to be able to get into the park easier. They feel like it's unfair. They used to have a walkway that the city blocked off, in their opinion. And I guess this turns out, we didn't have access to that. I don't know what the solution was there. Could you tell me more about that and how we're going to help them get access to the park that is in their backyard?
Mr. Langloy.
Yeah, thank you. And Councilman Radke, I believe we are talking about Moravian Park, not Magnolia.
I'm sorry, Moravian Park. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, we, I haven't been able to dig up any information as to how it turned from a catwalk to a closed-off area. And that's something that we are going to continue to research with our attorney's office. We've delved into just about every department we have in the city and really are struggling to find that information. So from there, we will, if we do have access to that, it'll be our plan to get that opened up for those residents off of Mizzano to be able to access the park from that location.
Well, excellent, because I urge everyone at home to read the plan. There is actually a map that has circles about how far the average person should have to walk to be within range of a park. And on Moravian Park, you're right, I'm sorry, I had Magnolia, which is on the west side of the city. It's Moravian Park. There's a circle surrounding the neighborhood there, but the residents can't actually access the park from their neighborhood. They'd have to go out to a major roadway, go all the way around. I walked it once. It's more than a mile, kind of in a square off, to get to the park that they can see from their houses, which is not the best way to do business. So even though we say the parks are accessible, if we make it very hard for residents to enter them, they really aren't accessible. That was one of my big things. And also, I think that the map, which was very informative, also shows for the need for a community center or some kind of park in the 15 Mile and Van Dyke area, because those are the two areas, both south of 15 and north of 15, which don't really touch any of our parks directly. So I would urge both my colleagues and people at home to contact my colleagues, talk about hopefully repurposing the Fillmore Elementary Site to a better site. And just briefly, I also read with interest about a park on Red Run, this Red Run Park that we have, that, is it marked? I don't even know if we, people know that we have a park there. So if we could put like a sign in front of it or something to kind of inform the residents that this is actually their property and that they can use it, I think that'd be fascinating, because I can't tell you how many times I've driven Red Run. I had no idea that the city even owned a park on Red Run. With that, I have one more question. It's about the former Puffin Park site. Is that the site of the park that hopefully we're going to do a land swap for, to get more land to hopefully build out a place structure for the residents?
Mr. Langloy.
Yes, that is, that is correct. We're still working through the appraisal process. It's a very cumbersome appraisal process, because that property was purchased with grant funds through the state and the National Park Service. So it's a very high-level appraisal that has to take place. It's been going on for quite some time. We are seeing progress on it, but that is exactly the site that we are looking to improve through that land swap. Really, it's not even a land swap, but through a mutually agreeable arrangement, which will ultimately allow a road to go through the park to a new subdivision.
Which would then expand the park for us.
Correct.
Yes. One more thing, I guess, while I'm thinking about it. Several residents have contacted me about these things in the past, so I'll bring them up here. One, Baumgartner Park, which we had soccer fields to and is now more accessible, does not have sidewalk linking it to the area around it. And I think it's kind of hard to tell residents, you should come to a park, and then have to walk across non-sidewalk to get to said park to go into it, even though there, we've added a place gate there, but I think most residents wouldn't even know it, because they can't access the park. On top of that, I think that we have a shared use path on Dodge Park, I think, starting at 16 Mile going north. Some residents on the east side of 15 Mile, they say they get a lot of bike traffic coming off that shared use path directly onto the sidewalk south of 16. I think if we could think about expanding that shared use path from 16 Mile to 15 Mile, the residents there would very much appreciate it. I had one woman who uses a wheelchair, and she said that with the bikes and her wheelchair, it almost becomes a face-off to go down the sidewalk, because if there's people who are riding, at least one person on a bike, they have to either, one of them has to get off onto the grass, the other person can pass. Other than that, I think this plan is excellent, and I think that you've shown that you've done, put a lot of work into it. The parks are our crown jewel in Sterling Heights. The residents love them. They love what you're doing. I just see room for us to continue to improve to make, in my opinion, the best park system in the state. So keep up the good work. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else on council?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. Just briefly, thank you for all of your hard work on this report. I do want residents to realize that this document is actually nothing set in stone, like was said. It's basically a wish list, kind of like our strategic planning. That being said, Fillmore was mentioned by Mr. Radke, and that is also mentioned in the report acquiring Fillmore School. Through the chair to Mr. Langloy, I have to tell you that as an employee of the district, I've gotten many, many phone calls from staff that are being displaced from that building this week, insisting that the city has already purchased that building or has an agreement to take over that building. Can you please, please dispel these rumors?
Mr. Langloy.
Certainly. There is no plan in place at this Certainly. There is no plan in place at this point to purchase or take over Fillmore. I mean, certainly, it's in our plan, but there is no agreement in, in order at this point in time. In fact, we would need to secure funding to even be able to do that, which is, through grant funding, which would be one of our funding mechanisms, we are probably two, we'd be two years away from that being the case. I know the district has certainly plans for all of their buildings and their operations, which is not something that I'm privy to. But certainly, it would not be related to this plan by any stretch.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, because, like I said, I've been getting phone, phone calls and texts, and, and I wanted to clear that up, that, that we have not acquired that building. And, you know, if it's, if we acquire the building with grant funding, we still have to fund it to fill it. So that is, at this point, a wish and not a want, or it's a want, but not a need. So I just wanted to clarify that. I think, you know, what, what you've presented is really encouraging and exciting, and, and a continuation of recreating recreation, and I appreciate all your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it's been said, this is our wish list book plan. So through the chair to Mr. Langloyes. In here, it talks about a high bike path from the east to the west along the Sterling Relief Drain. Can you explain that a little bit, what the plan would be and how it would go?
Mr. Langloy.
Believe you are referring to one of our concept plans. It's actually a county plan referencing a previous plan that was discussed at city council level. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Yep. So that plan wasn't included in our plan as a, certainly a potential opportunity that was worth including in our plan to show what a, show that it, it's an opportunity down the road that could be considered for non-motorized transportation. We did also put a footnote on that, that it was debated pretty heavily at city council level, and there are no plans to pursue that trail at this time. But nonetheless, being that it is an opportunity, it is something that we felt was important to include in the plan.
Now, isn't that something that we're doing tonight as far as linking Freedom Hill?
That is actually a separate plan, a separate section of the trail. The trail that's on the agenda tonight is not directly behind Holmes in Sterling Heights, on the other side of the drain. So two completely separate plans, completely separate trail concepts.
But wouldn't this other plan be added to that if it were done? So that it would go all the way over to Nelson Park?
There are no plans for that at this point in time.
No, this is just a wish list.
Yes.
This is something that possibly, maybe, could be done in the long future.
It is in the plan as, as an item that certainly should be considered moving forward if we want to ultimately extend and expand our non-motorized inventory of trails, yes.
Okay. One other thing, how about Belvedere Dance Hall? Is there any thought about doing anything with that?
Belvedere Dance Hall?
That's what it was.
That's what it was. That was a throwback. Mr. Langloy.
So the Belvedere Park Dance Hall was part of, it's part of what is now Rotary Park. In the, the back section, there are still some, I guess, pieces of the, the old building back there. We have talked internally in our department about coming up with some programming that incorporates some of those landmarks along the Clinton River and in our park system. We don't have any immediate plans, certainly not in this master plan, to renovate or do anything with it. It's in a very sensitive area of the, the park in terms of wetlands. It's actually very difficult to, to get to from certainly the, the main part of Rotary Park. And one of the reasons why it was built up on stilts at the time is because that area flooded so frequently. So no immediate plans for that. It remains an important part of our park's history and our city's history, but no immediate plans to do anything with it, other than potentially make it a tour spot on a, a tour guide that we're talking about internally.
Well, I was thinking more like a tourist attraction, if ever you want to do a tour of our parks and show off some of our walking hiking paths. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kosky. Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Urkel.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. First of all, thank you for putting this all together. It certainly is a vision. The only thing that I would ask, that as we move forward and each project comes up, that you just keep us into the loop as to what you're working on, rather than even bringing it at the end, you know, after your work is completely done, that if you just keep us in the loop so that we could, you know, discuss it, or maybe ask questions about it, add to it. But that's the only thing that I could want for you to, you know, to, for you to do. Other than that, it's a great vision, and just thank you for putting it together.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Urkel. Anyone else? Mr. Yanis?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple quick questions. I'm going to call you Kyle, because I've heard your last name pronounced four different ways already. I don't know if any of them are right. So when it comes to the purchasing of layup, what is, what is the criteria?
Mr. Langloyes. Correct pronunciation.
Langwa. That would be the correct pronunciation, yes. Do you mind, sir, elaborating a little bit more in terms of criteria?
Well, I, yes.
What I, what, is it what I?
Call him Henry.
Yeah.
Is it what would my criteria for choosing the parcels, or is it what would be the criteria for?
So in regards to purchasing land, is it simply that you want to expand a park or create a new park? I mean, with this plan, which by the way, very good plan. But when you're, when you, you mentioned that, or it was mentioned in the presentation about the purchasing of land, what is the criteria? Why are you purchasing land? Expansion, new parks, whatever?
Mr. Langloy.
Yeah, that, excellent question. Thank you for the clarification. So I'm going to use two examples that are, we have interest in. There's a parcel of property just south of 17 Mile along Utica Road was one of the parcels that was included in our master plan as something that would be desirable for the city to acquire. And the rationale behind that is really to expand our, our green belt along kind of the Clinton River. It's at the south, the south end of what would be South Clinton River Park. There's a number of wooded areas there. There's a number of wetlands areas along the way. There's retention ponds, and that just kind of continues that green belt a little bit further to the south of Utica Road. But also for conservation purposes. It's not desirable land for building, great land to have in our inventory to maintain natural forested parkland, plant additional trees along the way. So that's a desirable parcel of land from a conservation standpoint. From the flip side, when we look at a, a concept plan like acquiring a parcel such as Fillmore Elementary, and this is something that Councilman Radke did bring up too, we looked at that as a potential opportunity, because we don't have a park in that section of, that nook of the city. Node, if you want to use node, whatever you want to use, we don't have a park in that spot. And so finding a parcel of property in that area was intriguing to us, because it could fill that need. So goal would be to either A, conserve, continue to increase our tree canopy, continue to ensure that we have natural public lands that we'll be able to preserve for hopefully ever in perpetuity, or if there's a parcel of property that has a utility to our residents and to the Parks and Recreation Department, that would be really the two pieces of criteria that we would look to, look to utilize when purchasing a parcel of land. Similar criteria we used when we recently purchased an acre from the church next to Donovan Park. You know, we purchased that for additional parking down the road to support the operations of Donovan Park and the baseball and softball clubs.
Thank you for that explanation. I'm glad it's on tape, because I'm going to bring something up, strategic planning, that's going to fit right into that. And one other question I have, in regards to our trails, especially the Iron Bell Trail, which is, I think, really fantastic. I don't know if there's any other states that have a trail that literally go from north to south, the entire length of their state. So I think this is a fantastic project. But I'm, I'm curious, as we attract people to come through our city on the Iron Bell Trail, or any trail through Sterling Heights, I'm curious about signage and basic economic activity for people who don't live in our city, or maybe even people who do live in our city, to stop for a respite at one of our local establishments. I know that I've bicycled myself up into Lake Orion, and stopped downtown and ate and bicycled back. And, you know, we have a number of, you know, ice cream parlors and restaurants and stores. So I'm just wondering about, is there going to be signage along this pathway, or any pathway, that will help with stimulating some economic activity in the area?
Yeah, our, our goal, and in the plan, we've actually identified, there are still multiple potential routes for Iron Bell to work their way through the city of Sterling Heights. One of the, I believe, attractive routes would be taking the trail through Baumgartner Park, through the ITC corridor, through Baumgartner Park, up to, or across 15 Mile to Dodge Park, as was discussed, expanding that shared use path, going to the north, bringing everybody through what is kind of our main stretch of the road leading into the center of the city. It would go past Coaches Ice Cream, other shops along the way, and then filter through the library, the community center into Dodge Park, and then up through the park and through the trail system. So that provides the most economic impact going that way, as opposed to staying in the ITC corridor the entire way. That being said, the Iron Bell Trail has a specific signage. You know, the, the goal would be to have consistent signage along the entire trail, certainly with an expectation and a desire to support local businesses along the trail.
Well, I, I know that when we, you know, when you drive down the expressway, there's the signs that tell you what restaurants are at the next exit, what gas stations are at the next exit. Do you know of any, I'm sorry, I have a third question. Do you know of any phone apps that travelers can use, like if they're bicycling or what have you, that would, would, you know, show landmarks or show restaurants other than, I mean, I guess they could use Yelp, you know, if they really wanted to stop somewhere. But do you know of any apps for avid bicyclist runners or anything that would also show establishments? Or could we create one?
I think part two would be the more likely scenario. There's a number of apps out there that, and we've looked at this a number of times, actually, too. Councilwoman Urkel, Councilwoman Schmidt have talked about, you know, an app to help navigate our trail systems a number of times. I think this would potentially fit into that. There are not canned apps out there that we found. We've done some searching. I think we would have to probably enlist the services of an app building company to build what we're looking for. I'm sure a combination, you know, serious bikers, runners, walkers, they probably have their favorite app that gets them what the information they're looking for. But if we are going to look at a more all-encompassing app and map that would route, or, you know, be of the entire route of the trail, we would probably have to create that to hit the highlights of what we want to achieve on that map, if we want to make sure certain, certain areas are on the trail map.
Very good. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you very much for, for both your presentations, and particularly for the plan and the work that went into it. I only have one question. I'm looking at the upcoming schedule of potential improvements, and one that I, I've been asked a couple times about by friends and, and others is the disc golf course. This has been something discussed for quite some time, I know. I mean, I, in my first election in 2009, Jeff Norgriff was standing at a poll, handing out literature for Mayor Notti, and he, he cornered me, and he had like the plans for the disc golf course, like in his briefcase or something. And so I know he's been talking about, we've been talking about this for over a decade. It says that that's in the two-to-four-year, two-to-five-year timeframe. Can you give any update on that?
Certainly. A number of things kind of unraveled and took place as, as it relates to the disc golf course. Ultimately, differing of opinion on, on how that should play out and be built. It doesn't mean that there's not a great opportunity there at Nelson Park still for a disc golf course. At this point, what is going to kind of drive that is what happens with Puffin Park, because that is shared space. In fact, the disc golf plan initially that was put together did involve using the parking lot of Puffin Park and involved utilizing some of the space from Puffin Park into Nelson Park South. So we're going to need to get through Puffin Park first, get that situated and built out and developed, and then we can decide from there what's going to be the best course of action to put in what I expect to be a, a nine-hole disc golf course, not an 18-hole, large expansive championship tournament-quality disc golf course.
Okay. Very good. And speaking of being cornered, did, did my dad cornering you about pickleball courts?
In Shelby Township?
Oh, no.
He cornered me.
They don't have, they don't have good courts in Shelby Township. He's got to go to Washington. But I told him, we've got pickleball courts here. All kidding aside, you know, that is a, one of the probably fastest-growing new sports that's, that's out there, right? And good to see that you've got some, some expansion of that service as well. I know it's something that a lot of our, our residents, and, and residents from outside of the, the city would use as well. So again, thank you very much. Appreciate your hard work on this. And council, without any, Mrs. Schmidt?
I'm sorry. Just briefly, I don't know if you remember, when we were in Mackinac, we played something called kick golf.
Oh, I remember.
It was so much fun. I think I would like kick golf.
I thought it was foot golf.
It was soccer golf.
It, it was fun. So, you know, I wouldn't mind finding a spot for that. Put it at Family Park. It's right down the street from me. You know, I just think it's something that would be relatively cheap, and it was, it would be family fun. Anybody can do it. Well, can try to do it. But we had a lot of laughs, and it's just that, that, that's all I have.
Yeah, very, very good comment. I agree. That was a lot of fun. Mr. Radke?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, I forgot one more question. This, in this plan, it talks about our interlocal agreement with, with Warren regarding their, their pool and their facilities there. Could you just speak to what the current agreement is? Because I get a lot of calls from residents about this, about the swimming pool, basically, and what our agreement is with them, and what services they are supposed to give to Sterling Heights residents, to make sure that everybody's on the same page?
Mr. Langloy.
Certainly. When we initially signed and inked the intergovernmental agreement, that was for the use of the community center. At the time, that included use of the pool, whether it was for annual passes, monthly memberships, or at that time, they were also doing a drop-in or daily passes as well to use their facilities. So basically, the city pays a, an annual fee to the city of Warren, and in turn, it affords our residents an opportunity to use those facilities, which we don't have, at their resident rates. That plan remains in place today. The difference that warrants discussion, which is probably what you're referring to, is, is changes that have been made since COVID-19 kind of swept us, swept us over early last year. So since COVID-19 has come about, and since they've reopened, it's only been reopened to annual passholders or monthly passholders. So they've not reopened the doors to daily drop-ins, as we call them, or daily passholders for a number of reasons. Certainly to better manage the capacity that they have in there, but also they feel that it's a better experience for the users. And I, I can't really refute that, because it's their operation. So they've chosen to go in the direction of only allowing annual and monthly passes. That rule is in place for Warren residents, Sterling Heights residents as well. So we are not being singled out in any, any way, shape, or form there. It certainly is a departure from what the initial plan was. Again, COVID-driven. We are in the final few months, actually, of the initial agreement period, so we are going to be going back to discussion that's supposed to happen here later this month, as to what the next five years looks like, if in fact, we're both interested in continuing that agreement. In my opinion, having access to facilities of another municipality is important. It's a great regional partnership that we have. Their building is very close to our borders, and so it does provide our residents a, a great opportunity to use a community pool, a workout facility, if they want to do so in a municipal setting, instead of private recreation opportunities that are also plentiful around the city of Sterling Heights, too. of Sterling Heights, too. So it is, it has been a beneficial plan. We've had, certainly before COVID, a significant number of residents were taking advantage of the, what I would call the discounted rate to be able to use their facility at their resident rates and assuming, again, direction from our council and their council is to continue the partnership arrangement, we would be looking to do that for another period of time, potentially up to another five years.
Well, one thing I would say is that there's obviously a lot of debate about community pool. And right now, we can use the Warren Community Pool at their rates, which is very good. But it does, you know, it can be hard to pay for a monthly or yearly membership if you only want to take the kids to the pool occasionally. So if we could explore other partnerships for a pool, I'd like to build a pool, but that's, that's, that's pie in the sky. That's really out there and we're never, we're not going to get there anytime soon in Sterling Heights. So the idea would be a way that our residents can access pool facilities, both for swimming lessons and for just recreation. That's what I'm hoping for. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for a second shot.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again. Next item on our agenda tonight is an ordinance introduction, and this is to consider introduction of an ordinance to amend Chapter 25 of the city code by adding Article One to prohibit discrimination in housing, employment, and public accommodations. We have a presentation from our Assistant City Attorney, Don Denault. Mr. Denault.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good evening and Happy New Year to all of you. We are here tonight to discuss the introduction of a nondiscrimination ordinance. This is an ordinance that our office prepared and council enacted back in 2014, if some of you recall, seven years, seven, eight years ago already. That time has flown. We are presenting the ordinance to you in its initial form. We have not modified it in any way, and it really hasn't been, been in need of any modification over the last seven years since that time period when we introduced it back then. The courts have ruled on a few things that have enhanced protections against discrimination in certain areas, but this ordinance was always intended to only fill the gaps, so to speak. It was only intended to cover areas that aren't quite yet covered by either case law or state or federal laws. An example would be Title VII of the Civil Rights Act in federal law. That protects against discrimination by employers who have 15 or more employees. This ordinance would just protect everyone regardless of your employer's size. And it would cover the things that the United States Supreme Court covered in its opinion last year, which would include things like sexual orientation and gender identity, things that aren't quite there yet in a lot of other places in the law, but would be here and are already in Title VII for employers of 15 or greater. So that's just a sort of a big picture overview. I know we've presented a lot of information to you to kind of refresh and re-up, re-up your knowledge of what this ordinance does, what it is, what it says, and I'm here to answer any questions and help you out with that any way I can.
Thank you very much, Mr. Denault. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Mr. Matthews?
John the Matthews, I live just off of 15 Dequender. I apologize, my name is not as exciting to pronounce. I grew up in Chesterfield and I lived there for many years. And many years ago, I was still living there when I was looking for a job as a teacher after I finished at Michigan State. And I settled on Troy, but that could have been Utica. And I was also, a couple of years later, looking for a house to buy. And I did settle with my now husband on a house in Sterling Heights in 2017, but that could have been a year before that. It also could have been in Oakland County. This nondiscrimination ordinance could have made the difference in a number of those factors, where I worked and where I lived, where both of us live now, actually. It would have made a big difference for us and it can make a big difference for other people as well. Now, Mr. Vanderpoel, earlier in his presentation, had on a slide, what makes Sterling Heights so desirable? And I think the inclusivity of the city and its residents is one of those things. And I think codifying that could go a very long way to helping people who may be moving in from out of state and don't exactly know where to live, might help them make a decision. There are some people I've talked to in other states who might be affected by this, and they did say indeed, that would help them make their decision. Now, this ordinance, as Mr. Denault has said, which you can find on page 155 of the electronic packet, affects two things, housing and employment. Both of these ideas really aren't new to have an ordinance in this area. When it comes to housing, we have a number of places in Michigan that already have things on the books in this area. Among these places are Grand Rapids, Kamazoo, Ann Arbor, Birmingham, Dearborn Heights, Detroit, East Lansing, Lansing itself, Ferndale, Traverse City. There's a lot of places, right? We would not be the first one. We wouldn't be poking our nose out, so to speak. And when it comes to employers looking for their employees, there's a lot of big businesses that really support things like this going into place as well. This is along lines of the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act, AT&amp;T, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan, Consumers Energy, Dow Chemical, Google Worldpool. There's a lot of businesses that support things like this as well. I don't think it's just one or two individuals, in my, my husband's case, who would appreciate this, but a lot of other people. Now, I appreciate the electronic packets because they allow people who are not lawyers, I know we have some in this room, but I'm not one of them, they distill the information so I can take a look at it, and it seems like some of the details have been narrowed out as well. This is not done on a napkin. I know that this was introduced before I moved to the city in 2014, but looking through it, you know, there are some good considerations given. In Section 2516 of it, which you can find on page 167 of the packet, this eliminates the potential for people who may file some sort of nondiscrimination claim to double dip with both the city ordinance and some private action there. I do have one question about the timeline of how an investigation like that would happen. I don't know who would know about that, perhaps Mr. Kuschubski, Mr. Denault, but that really is the only thing that I think I don't know a lot about after reading this. And I feel very confident that the rest of this was very well assembled in a way that I would feel very comfortable and very proud of if it went into place. Now, there's even a clause down in here, I looked at this, that explicitly states no preferential treatment is to be given. It's just to make sure that people are treated equally. It's an important issue to me, and as the packet said, it's a negligible cost, but a potential big gain on principle. And I think that's an important thing for the city to consider. Because of that, I don't think there's a need to wait for a state or a court to render this redundant. We could be more at the forefront of this. I think that would be a good look for us. And because of that, I would really recommend strongly on this important issue that the council go through with this introduction and perhaps adopt it in two weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Orchata?
Benjamin Orchata. Great to see you all again. I would love to see this get passed in two weeks. It's deeply personal, it's important to me, it's important to family, it's important to friends of mine. And at the beginning of this discussion, it was said, you know, we haven't had any reports of this kind of discrimination, but those reports aren't going to come if there isn't something on the books for people to be reporting about. If somebody doesn't see that they have protections for being LGBT with regards to housing and they get discriminated against, they're not going to report it to the city if the city's not protecting that. If somebody doesn't have protections for having a different gender identity and they can discriminate against, they're not necessarily going to know that they can report it to the city and seek action and redress for that discrimination. Few weeks back, some of the council had expressed concerns that we could put this off and let the Supreme Court handle some far-flung case in late 2022, early 2023 that may handle some of what's covered here. And while that may hypothetically be so, I don't think that it is in the public interest for us to put that kind of a delay in these protections because in eviction, when somebody is having that process against them, it doesn't take a full year to process. If somebody gets fired from a job unjustly, it doesn't take a year for that person to lose that job, lose that income, and lose so much of what's keeping them, you know, together in our city. Even if this someday becomes redundant at a federal level, what we take on today protects people today. And I ask for you to pass this in a couple of weeks when we're able to because that is what our city deserves and that's what our residents deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wright?
I hope you all had a good Christmas and a Happy New Year. When I was watching the meeting from two weeks ago, I found myself getting really frustrated by some of the comments of the council members who seemed to care more about or worry more about the controversy that this may bring up than the fact that this will provide equality to all of our citizens. I understand seven years ago, when this came through, there was a vocal minority, there probably still is that same vocal minority, who will petition and get signatures and say horrible and vile things. And I say, go ahead and let's let them do that. Let's let them show everyone in the city who they are and what they truly believe. We shouldn't let fear of controversy stop us from doing the right thing for the people of our city. So I just echo the other two people who came up and just say, please pass this, make everybody in the city know that they have people who are protecting them and who care about them regardless of their gender identity or what they, you know, who they love. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? Thank you, next.
Hi, Mayor and council members and guests. My name is Jade Cruz. Well, obviously you can tell probably like right off the bat, I'm transgender. So, yeah, I'd say like, I think, you know, it feels like just passing it might be redundant in the future, but it does send the right message. I've been a resident for about five years. I live at 16, near, well, actually near 17 in Van Dyke, right by Dodge Park. I grew up in Shelby Township. I went to Eisenhower. I went to Kettering University. I went to the Naval Postgraduate School, you know? So you were also talking about bringing, you know, high-tech jobs and stuff like that. That's me. You know, you're looking for people that can program apps. That's me. You know, like, so, yeah, I think, you know, it might be kind of controversial, but it does send that, the message that you want to value people for their outputs and what they produce, you know? Like, I don't even want to be here tonight, you know? I'm not trying to cause a controversy. I usually just like to do my job, you know, like go to Emus Park and play roller hockey and then bike or, you know, run at Dodge Park. So like, I'm in all like, you know, I'm probably like 0.3% of the population or something really small like that, but you'd be surprised because there's definitely, you know, people out there like me that, I don't know, I think you're looking at certain factors that really shouldn't be relevant when you're looking at employment and housing, like, you know, what skills do I have? Do I show up on time, you know? What's my past performance? What are my skills? And in housing, you know, like, am I maintaining my property in 24 hours? Am I, you know, clearing the snow? And I am. So like, you know, I'm doing all that stuff and then like I have to transition still. So it's like, you know, it's just an added sort of barrier to making progress and living. Like, it's already hard enough. So it would mean a lot to me and that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else on this item? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Gonna find the motion.
Resolved to introduce the ordinance amending Chapter 25 of the city code by adding Article One to prohibit discrimination in housing, employment, and public accommodations.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, we've, we've talked about this for a long time. I think it's, it's long overdue. It's something the city can make a statement about. Our city is changing. It is a more inclusive place than when I moved here in 1997. I'm proud to live here now and I want to make sure everyone feels included in our community. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I also want to echo, echo Mr. Radke's comments. It is, at the end of the day, whatever we do up here should be about doing the right thing. And that is my barometer, that is my thermometer, whatever I try to do in my life, it's, is it right? Is it going to be right for the most people? And this definitely is. As one of our previous speakers just said, it, it doesn't matter if you're the 0.3% of anything, you're still entitled to rights that we need to protect. And I am more than happy to be a part of that. And so I have, I am going to be certainly supporting this, voting for it next, in our next meeting, and I am really happy to see that this is back. Thank you, Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Mrs. Zarco.
Simply, thank you, Mayor Taylor. I voted for this the first time. I'm voting for it today. I want it to stay in place, and that's my biggest thing. I have no problems with this at all. I think it's the right thing to do, and I certainly hope that things have changed in the city in the last seven years so that we don't see what would happen seven years ago. That's all I'm asking because I want this to stay in place this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you. I as well voted in favor of this in 2014 and will be voting in favor of it again tonight. It was unfortunate that we had to repeal it, and as my colleagues have said, it's time for this to be back, back on the table and for us to make this decision. So I have nothing further.
Counsel, anyone else? Well, these have been brief comments, so I'll try not to go on for too long. I can just say, you know, the two meetings where we discussed this, or more than probably two meetings in 2014, oh, seven and a half years ago, to see the difference now for those who weren't here, it's hard to explain the vitriol, the hatred, you know, the, some of the just absolutely mean spirited things that, that happened. My wife says I'm bad at analogies, but I'm going to just bear with me. When I was an exchange student, I lived in Mexico for three months, and on the flight down, I barely spoke any Spanish. And, and I remember the flight attendant talking and, you know, I couldn't understand anything she was saying. And then three months later, on the flight back, I understood almost all of it. And I think progress sometimes is like that, that you don't know what's happening and, you know, it's chaotic around you. And what I see tonight versus what happened seven and a half years ago means the progress has been made. And it's, it's working and there's a lot more progress we can make on a lot of other issues. But if you just see what the difference is tonight, and I hope I'm not jinxing myself for two weeks from now, but man, I mean, it, it is really inspiring to see nobody here, you know, in a sense. It's really inspiring to think that, you know, you can take an issue that is so fundamental to people that people fought against hard to stop it, and now I don't think that they would want to show their face and be associated with that. And, and to see the progress that we have as a society have made in seven and a half years is really, really great to see. So I thank my colleagues, you know, a special shout out to our former colleague Doug Skinarz, who was a huge help in getting this passed in 2014, and I'm glad that it's coming back in the same form and it's here to stay this time, folks. So with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next item on our agenda tonight, and this is an ordinance adoption. This is to adopt the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. Thank you, Mr. Denault. Good job. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on the amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance? If not, counsel?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolved to amend the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance for fiscal year 2021, 2022 to fund, do we want to do in pieces or in both? Okay, well, I'm going to go for, as amended, subject, suggested action number two. So let me rephrase. Resolved to adopt the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance?
Mrs. Sarowski, if you want to, why don't you withdraw what you've said so far and start from scratch?
Let me withdraw and start from scratch again. Resolved to adopt the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 as amended. year 2021-2022 as amended.
So, to be clear, that would not, that would be adopting-
That would not be, oh, that would be with the amendments?
-what was presented at the last meeting without the amendments for the deputy chief or the, or the fire inspector. If you want the deputy chief and the fire inspector, you gotta go with suggestion number one. If you want one or the other, just leave one out.
Okay, well, I'll go with number one then. Resolved to amend the First, amend the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance for the fiscal year 2021-2022 to fund the deputy police chief and fire inspector job classifications in the amount of $120,000 with an offsetting reduction in the contribution to other post-employment benefits.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Sarowski?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm gonna go with that.
All right. I'm not sure if it was Mr. Radke or Mr. Yanez. Mr. Yanez?
Who's, who supported?
Yeah, I'm giving you the floor, Mr. Yanez.
Oh, you're giving me the floor?
If you want, if you want it.
Yeah, so, um, you know, I know we had a rather, a rather robust discussion back during the original budget in regards to a fire inspector. We had, we had the fire chief, who I questioned in regards to the status of our commercial fire inspections, and he said we were way behind. I forget his exact words, but it was obvious that we are nowhere near where we should be in our commercial fire inspections. You know, our fire inspections are incredibly important. I, you know, I originally started my firefighting career as a volunteer in the city of Troy, and people would ask me all the time, how can Troy have a volunteer fire department? And the reality is that back in the early 70s, when communities like Troy and Sterling Heights were trying to decide what to do as they were growing and growing so fast, what did they do with their, their fire protection? Some communities like Sterling Heights opted for a more Detroit-style plan where they put their focus on extinguishment. But the city of Troy decided to put their money into fire prevention and inspection and maintain a volunteer suppression department. This is the absolute importance of a safe community, is making sure that our buildings are safe. When you go into a building, you know, when you sit in a movie theater, you see the exit signs, you know? When you go anywhere, you see the exit signs. You have the panic bar doors in case of emergency. You have fire alarm systems, sprinkler systems. None of that matters unless it works. None of that matters unless it works. And we don't know if it works unless somebody inspects it. Period. We are behind in our commercial fire inspections. And, and here's, and here's the biggest problem that I see. It takes approximately four to six months to certify an inspector. And that's just for inspecting buildings. If they want to do water flow tests or sprinkler tests, then it takes almost a year. So every time we delay this, we're not delaying it till the next meeting or the next, you know, month. We're delaying it six months every time we delay it to get somebody inspect, get somebody in, in the queue to get them certified to inspect. You know, I, I know this wasn't, wasn't teed up in the initial amendment, and I know this was brought on as an amendment, but I cannot tell you how important it is that we get somebody on the line right now, or at least in the queue right now, to get the people trained and certified to become a fire inspector. We have buildings that haven't been inspected in a decade. We all know about the building that was hit by the garbage truck that, that partially collapsed the wall and exposed an illegal marijuana grow. My understanding is that building hadn't been inspected in nine years. Hadn't had anybody from the fire department in that building in nine years. Who knows what kind of unsafe operations are going on? Forget illegal, just unsafe operations. And on top of that, we had to pull one of our inspectors off for almost a year, approximately a year, just to do marijuana grow houses. He wasn't even in a commercial buildings, making sure that they're safe for the people who work in there, as well as our firefighters who may have to respond to an emergency in that building. So I cannot tell you how important this is. I know because I came from the fire department and maybe it seems like I'm, I'm carrying their water a little bit. That's not the case. My work from the fire department tells me how important this job, I know how important this job is because I, I was one of those guys that went into one of those buildings filled with smoke and didn't know if a vat of, of chemicals that wasn't supposed to be there was gonna dump on me and my crew. It's important for, for the safety of our first responders. It's important for the safety of the people who work in this city. And it's important for the overall, how people overall view the city of Sterling Heights. As I mentioned two weeks ago, you know, we get this FBI rating, the safest city, you know, one of the safest large cities in the country, safest large city in the state of Michigan. Those are FBI crime statistics. They have nothing to do with fire protection. I, I know that there's an issue or a concern about how we're gonna pay for this. I'm hoping that during strategic planning, we're going to have some sort of plan or program presented as to how we're going to move forward with our fire inspections. But I believe that this is incredibly important, and so I am supporting suggested action number one that would include the deputy police chief and the fire inspector. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yanez. If I could ask you real quick, you mentioned that when you hire, or when, when you, like the, the fire inspector would need to be certified and it takes four to six months to do that, why wouldn't we hire somebody certified?
Because we bring, uh, it's been our policy, and I, I think maybe contractually, we advance people through the ranks. And firefighters, online firefighters just don't automatically get trained to be, I should say, extinguishment firefighters, or any, anybody who comes from, whether it's the training division, whatever, you have to become certified. We don't certify people until they're moved into that position, and we don't hire inspectors from the outside. At least that's not the plan. Now, maybe, maybe the city presents a plan at strategic planning or at some other point that would allow that to happen. I don't see that happening. And if we're gonna wait till next budget in, you know, July 1st, well, then we just, you know, kick the can six months down the road again, and those are buildings that aren't going to get inspected. So we don't, Mr. Mayor, I don't think we hire inspectors from the outside. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I guess it would, Mrs. Varney, can you come up here for a minute? So it says fire inspector job classification, I guess, which would indicate that we wouldn't be hiring a fire inspector from what Mr. Yanez stated, and it was his amendment at the last meeting, that this would be, would this be hiring a new firefighter and then promoting a current firefighter to fire inspector? Can you speak to that, Mrs. Varney?
Yeah, in my experience, the past fire inspectors have been promoted from within, and then eventually it would trickle down to hire a firefighter from the outside. And if you notice, in the ordinance, it indicates that both positions cost a total of $345,000, but yet I only budgeted $120 for six months, which is obviously less than $345,000. So that's where that's kind of taken into, into account for both positions, the deputy, again, I'm, I'm budgeting, I had to make assumptions because the, you know, especially the deputy chief's position hasn't been negotiated yet, but I assumed, you know, someone would get promoted and then, you know, so budgeting the salary differential in that case between a captain and a deputy police chief, and then eventually hiring a police officer from the outside. So similar for a fire inspector. I've never seen a, I mean, I, in the 14 years I've been here, I've never seen a fire inspector direct hired. It's always been promoted.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that clarification. Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I brought forward this amendment. I, I think they are both critical. I, I can't really add anything to what Councilman Yanez said because he explained the situation, I think, in a very robust manner. We, we need houses inspected. We've had detail, a fire inspector to just deal with the illegal marijuana grows that the state prevents us from banning in our neighborhoods. And these are high-hazard marijuana growths. People think, oh, it's just because they have a little bit of weed. No, it's because they have a facility that's pulling way too much amps through the box that is lighting poles on fire, sparking building fires. We had a situation last year, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, where a pole burned down because the amperage was so high that it left the neighborhood without power for at least a day. Because someone had, was illegally pulling power through. I see the fire, fire marshal is, is nodding his head in agreement. It was pulling so much power, it burned the pole down and we had to drive a new pole. And then we get calls. I get called all the time from residents who say, my power keeps going out. And I almost can draw on a map from them calling me and saying their power's going out, to a marijuana grow that is right in their neighborhood that is causing the brownouts, causing the blackouts, and, and really affecting the quality of life. So the fire inspector is, is essential. I also think the deputy police chief is essential. I think it's essential for many reasons, the most being that, you know, under the last two years especially, I think we've asked a lot from our, our first responders, both police and fire. And I think that our, our police chief is excellent, but he has been working very, very hard, and I think he could use a little bit of support in his department. I think a deputy chief will help him manage his load better, because I call them at all hours, I'm sure everyone else calls him at all hours, and I hope he gets some sleep. Because right now, he is working 24/7 for the city, and I think that a deputy police chief would help assist him and also help our organization, both with the implementation of a lot of the things we're asking of them now, and also just new policies. I mean, we've talked about better speed enforcement and better organizational enforcement. I think someone on hand at the time who can do that is essential. That's why I support both positions. And I'm glad that we found the money in the budget to pay for them for at least the next six months. I look forward to voting for this. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Any, Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. First of all, let me start by saying, I don't oppose these two positions. What I oppose of is the city has procedures in place for hiring and for making positions. So I guess my first question is through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel, has the chief of police and the fire chief come to you and said, you know, I formally need a fire inspector, which I understand we need, and I formally need a deputy chief immediately? Have you, have you had those conversations with the two chiefs?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Schmidt, we do not have a formal recommendation from either the fire chief or the police chief on either one of these positions. Certainly, there are positions that we've talked about. I don't think we're necessarily disputing the need. However, what administration is concerned about, and the reason we're not recommending the, the amended positions in sort of this emergency fashion, is because we just really haven't had a chance to analyze possible options. For example, well, first, let me just clarify with the fire inspections. We are doing fire inspections. For example, in 2021, we expect to complete over 1,800 fire inspections of buildings. In 2020, the actual number that we completed was 1,937. That's a significant number. In addition, the, the hazardous inspections that we conducted in, for example, 2020, was over 800. So inspections are being done. We are getting to many buildings, hundreds of them, but we just haven't had a chance to really analyze this. And the reason we haven't had a chance to analyze it is because we haven't had a formal request from either the fire chief or the police chief. Let me just say, and, and again, we understand the interest here. I appreciate that. But, but our job in administration is to always put forth the most cost-effective recommendations with respect to the firefighter inspector. There's a good chance we could hire multiple fire inspectors with a more cost-effective approach. For example, the approach that's being recommended through this amendment is the most expensive approach. We're hiring a sworn firefighter who's gonna make after five years almost $100,000 to conduct inspections. A more effective model that the city's used very effectively is in our building department where we've hired retired police officers. We pay them well, $26 an hour, but no benefits and, and no pension, no legacy costs and so on. And that model has become a model for other communities. It's, it's worked very well. That model will work in the fire department. We could hire a part-time retired firefighters that are certified. We train them and get them certified. And we could hire many more for the same price or, or a lower amount, but we haven't had a chance to analyze that. We really need to do that first with respect to the deputy chief. I can't dispute the comments that have been made. I could only question the process, only because, again, we don't have a formal recommendation from the police chief. The position has to be negotiated. It's very hard to send the HR manager into the negotiating room and negotiate the best deal for the city, which is his job, when the position's already funded. He'll have zero leverage to do that. So number one, it has to be negotiated. We don't even know what the salary amount would be. We haven't even studied that yet. We have to design an assessment process and negotiate that. That's not in the budget amendment. So we, it needs to go through a thorough process so that we can make a good recommendation of city council with good information. I know that's a long-winded response to your question, but the reality is, no, we don't have any recommendation from the two chiefs.
Okay, so, like I said, I'm not against, and I, I do see a valid need for these positions. However, the process is a little backwards to me. You know, Mr. Yanez, I, I love your passion. And, and for you, you know, to say, well, we funded it for six months, and we could talk about it at strategic planning to see how we're gonna fund it further, is kicking the can down the road to me. This is when, when we sat in our last budget hearing and some of us were for adding positions and others were not. And so it was a split vote on the budget. Everybody made their choice. Everybody saw what their priorities were, and we tasked administration with going back, sharpening their pencils, using their erasers, and that's exactly what they did. And with some patience, we were able to bring back some of those positions that were eliminated without raising taxes. And for that, I commend administration because they do magic with what they have. So I am not against these positions. I see a need for these positions. However, the process of doing an emergency funding of these positions, when as Mr. Vanderpoel stated, we really don't even have a position. And as far as the assistant chief, it, I believe it is a little different, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Vanderpoel, maybe you can clarify this. In the fire department, they do move up. In the police department, they don't. They have to test and be vetted to move into a higher position. So it is kind of apples and oranges in the process. Is that correct? Mr. Vanderpoel?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you. Yes, that's correct. And in the case of the deputy chief, they have to go through a, again, this all has to be outlined and negotiated and formalized, and it's gonna take some time to do that. But yes, they would have to go through an assessment center, and there'd be a testing criteria then to select from, and there'd be both internal and, and external candidates. And that all has to be designed and worked out. We don't, we don't even have a recommendation from the police chief, the HR manager, the chief financial officer to really elaborate any further on, on costs and the process and so on.
So because of that fact, I am not comfortable supporting the, the motion that's on the floor. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Anyone else? Mrs. Arco?
Mayor Taylor, thank you. First of all, thank you, Mrs. Schmidt, for asking a lot of the questions that I already had written down here. I'm going to agree with Mrs. Schmidt when she said, I certainly am in favor of not just one fire inspector, but maybe three. Not tonight. I certainly am in favor of a deputy chief in the police department because- I certainly am in favor of a deputy chief in the police department, because I think it would work there. But not tonight. I think some of what has been discussed could be put off until, what is it, three weeks from today? We have strategic planning, where we might be able to plan for this process, so that it could take effect come January 1st. But I think part of that would have to be the labor negotiations that the police department would have to do. What I don't understand is the timeline for some of this. I want to know, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel, say that we know in the future we are going to have to hire an inspector, and we know that there's going to have to be training, and that it usually is in six months. Why couldn't we have people that we know might be working into that position, start training now, on whatever time that they have, you know, in between shifts, knowing that they're preparing themselves for the opportunity, so that if that opportunity presents itself in six months, somebody's already trained and we haven't lost any time? So is that a possibility, Mr. Vanderpoel?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Zarco, yes, that is a possibility. It's a big part of our succession planning. We do that in many areas. We know, for example, well, I can't really divulge it here, because we're still working on some of the details. With respect to the illegal grow operations, we're working on a succession plan with the individual that's currently handling that, who's kind of the lead person on it. And we're working out an arrangement where we might, one of two things, either be able to create a unique contractual relationship with that individual upon his retirement, and/or identifying an individual which we have, that would work in conjunction or as a replacement with him. But again, these are things that take a little bit of time to research, and that's what the budget process is for, to bring forth these ideas through a very structured, arduous, sometimes contentious internally, budget process. There are many departments who request positions for very important purposes, in addition to these that we're discussing tonight, that we really have to hash out, and we use a collaborative approach too, with directors when we do this, before we get it to the point where we can make a formal recommendation to city council. But I might also, this is somewhat related to your question. In the ARPA funding, which you brought up, the need to maybe discuss this further at strategic planning, there was $300,000 set aside for illegal grow inspections, which is kind of an offshoot of this discussion this evening, creating the desire and the need for the fire inspector in part. So $300,000, to then use that money to bring forth a program for city council's consideration to fund additional inspection services. And that could be through a contractual arrangement as well. But there again, it's an example of we just need a little more time to analyze this and put forth a meaningful recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. My other question would be, is there some unwritten law that says that, maybe there's six firefighters, they're not in the seniority line to be an inspector, but they decide they want to get trained? And then there are off-hours between shifts, they want to put four hours in to do some inspections. Are they allowed to do that? I mean, does it have to be, I mean, it's a firefighter doing a fire inspection, but do they have to have the title "fire inspector"?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you again, Mayor. Councilwoman Zarco, it's interesting you bring that up, because as you know, some of council may remember, years ago, we, through the collective bargaining agreement, negotiated a provision where we could do company inspections. It's difficult to do because of the workload. They are really busy, there's no question about that, responding to medical runs, that's primarily our run load right now, is medical runs. But we do have the ability for firefighters to do regular inspections, and they're firefighters, they're not necessarily trained to do inspections. But there are rudimentary parts of an inspection that a firefighter can handle. And that's been done, in some cases. We have been able to do company inspections. The fire chief has created a task force that he's working on. I expect to have the report very soon, and I certainly will be sharing it with city council, because it's going to have some significant implications. But the task force is looking at the 27 assisted living facilities that disproportionately result in a preponderance of runs to those facilities. So in other words, the community is really subsidizing these disproportionate runs to these 27 facilities. If we can address that problem, one of two things is going to happen. It's going to free up some time for more company inspections, and/or it's going to create some revenue, or some combination, to possibly fund additional inspection services. But that report isn't complete yet. Again, that too, might be a deciding factor in city council's final decision on this. And that's probably going to take a couple of months to finish up and get before you.
I'm not finished. There's a couple of things. I really am not comfortable with the procedure that we're doing this. It would be like me coming here and saying, "I want everybody that's working part-time in the library to get their full-time position, if that's what they want." Or Mrs. Schmidt could come here and say, "I want five more people in DPW." I think by doing this, there are some people that they're getting out of their lane. And I think in order for this city to work as successfully as it has, is that we need to stay in our own lane. We are here to direct, and we're here to approve. And it's like, I don't think that you should be influenced by one person, especially if the request isn't coming from the department head. That's the other thing that I'm seeing here. And now I have a question, through the chair to Mrs. Varney. Mrs. Varney, when you set up the budget, how many people actually are on that, I want to say, committee, in order to discuss the needs, maybe whether it be capital needs or employee needs? Because I know that there are representatives from every department that come to put that budget together, and they all work collectively on what they feel another department needs. In other words, they know the organization, they know what people need, even though, you know, I've talked to Mr. Moore, and I says, "Oh, you know, ask for 12, you might get two," because that's the way the process works. So through the chair to Mrs. Varney, if you could explain that process?
So, all the department heads, it's actually, right now, next week, everyone's budget requests are due for '22, '23. So we, in the budget office, we go through those, you know, with a fine-tooth comb. Anything, any request over, you know, a reasonable amount, usually inflationary, have to be justified. We use, it's called a service improvement form, when you want to add something new to your department, including personnel. Last year was a little unique, because we had the manpower study, but now back to a normal year, if someone, you know, wants additional personnel, which almost every department head, every year, asks for additional personnel. We go through those requests, we meet, the city manager and I meet with every single department head and their directors to discuss, you know, the justification, to discuss, you know, to challenge them on finding a more cost-effective way to maybe get what they want. I mean, the, you know, it's, to be, you know, the easy answer is always, you know, "Give me five more people." But, you know, we've all been challenged, you know, I would love five more people in the budget office too, but we've all been challenged to, you know, find the most efficient ways to get our job done. So, you know, it's, I would say those meetings are collaborative. We discuss the requests, we talk about, and in those meetings, often managers or directors will come up with a different idea, or, you know, a different way to do things. And so then, so then, you know, we collaboratively come up with everything we would like to fund, and then, you know, I have to put the puzzle together and see how much money I have to try to fund those things. And unfortunately, you know, there's never enough to fund everyone's requests. So then we have to analyze the needs of the entire city, and try to prioritize everyone's wants, and try to find out what the most important needs are that we can fund that year. And especially in the case of personnel, that we can fund, you know, for the foreseeable future. Did that help?
Okay. I guess, lastly, I would say, I'm in favor of the appropriation ordinance as it was introduced to us and presented. I would hope that my colleagues might agree with me that in three weeks, one of the focal points that we'll put at strategic planning would be the fire inspector and the deputy chief. And I would hope that in that time, we could get some kind of negotiations going in the police department, to find out how that position would be funded, what union they would belong to, how much would they be paid, who do they answer to besides the chief? So those are a lot of questions that I would have for that position. So, as the motion sits now, I would be voting against this, even though I am in favor of the other positions that were introduced. So it breaks my heart to do that, but I just feel that the process that we're using here is totally wrong. Nothing further.
Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recall asking for a deputy police chief, I would say for at least the last 10 years. And I was always put off, and this last budget, I'm sure that our chiefs did not ask for any positions, because we were asked to wait until the staffing study came through. And as you said, Ms. Varney, nobody requested any positions or any additional people, simply because we have to wait until the staffing study is complete. So, I believe that that's why there was no formal request. As I said, I recall asking for a deputy police chief. The city has grown over the years, and with the different projects that our police chief has come up with, he needs help. He is one man trying to do a million different things, to make this city a safe city, a better city. And if I recall correctly, we had four captains. We didn't have a deputy chief, but we had four captains to assist the chief, to make sure that everything got done properly, that we didn't burn him out with overwork. So I feel that this position is long in coming. I feel that it's going to take a period of time to get that position in place. As it was said tonight, there's testing that has to be done, we need to find the right person. You have to apply for it, you have to be qualified to apply for it, you have to go through different testing. It's not going to be something that we can hire or put into place tomorrow. It has to be negotiated. The command officers have to agree to this. So there's a lot of work that has to go into selecting a deputy police chief. We'll be darn lucky if we can have somebody by July. So, don't tell me we have to worry about funding, because we'll probably be in the budget process before this person is even selected. So yes, I'm in favor of this tonight. It's not going to happen immediately, there's work that has to be done. As I said, collective bargaining agreements have to be worked out to make this work. So I'm in favor of this. It's going to take a while to get it done. I'm voting for it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Kosky. We are, this is a little bit awkward for me, because I'm not sure exactly what we're doing. We're budgeting money for these positions, but generally, when a position is budgeted in a form of budget that's presented to us by the city administration, it's more fully realized, in the sense that we sort of know what we're hiring, we know the job description and things like that. What I'm not sure about is, so, we're budgeting money for this fire inspector job classification, but really what we're, so we're going to eventually have a fire inspector, but really what we're doing is going to be hiring, the end result is hiring a new firefighter, right? I mean, that's essentially, we're going to take a current firefighter, make them a fire inspector, and hire a new firefighter. Fair?
I mean, yeah, I mean, but the new position is an additional fire inspector.
Okay.
It's just, it gets filled through promotion, and then it eventually, I mean, it's similar to any, I mean, that happens with a lot of positions. We add the new position and people promote, and then you eventually hire, you know, down the line.
Yeah. So, as Mrs. Schmidt and as Mrs. Zarco said, I'm fully in support of the policy of dedicating city resources to increasing fire inspections. No question. And if we have a way to do that, I mean, you say, reducing contributions to other post-employment benefits, we had this discussion some six, eight months ago, I mean, that looks to me like moving money from one pocket to the other. I mean, like, why were we budgeting for post-employment benefits if we didn't need it there? I know, we spoke at the last meeting, that there's been some new assumptions there, but you, when you, when we analyzed it before, when you and I spoke privately before, it was like, well, these new positions that were included in the budget, and the reduction in the, the changes in the assumptions, get us to a break even, right? That was what it was before. So with this new $120,000, we're below the break even.
So, so what's changed from the budget is we got the actuarial report. And the actuarial report actually reduced our recommended OPEB contribution by $2 million. In the amend, but again, we have traditionally funded over and above the recommended amount, which is why we've gone from 6% to 80% in 15 years. So, and again, I'm barely, I'm very confident that that reduction is permanent, but it's never guaranteed. So, I was comfortable taking half of that reduction, a million dollars, to fund the positions that we had already discussed, and plus help get rid of the use of fund balance. My preference was to keep overfunding OPEB by a million dollars, which is what the original first amendment did. But, you know, when it, when I had to find the money somewhere to fund these positions, it's a choice. It's, you know, it's a choice in your personal life. Do I put more money in savings, or do I buy more stuff?
Buy more stuff. Always the answer.
So, you know.
Speak for all of America.
So, in order to fund these two positions, you know, one option, we would still be overfunding OPEB by almost, you know, over $800,000. But my original proposal was to keep the million dollars, which, again, has been very successful plan in getting us to our, the funding status that we're at.
Look, I get that, and I appreciate the explanation, and it makes perfect sense. And it may very well be the case that doing more fire inspections is more valuable to the community than putting away more money into our OPEB costs. What, I have the same fundamental objection, though, that I had when we did this back in May, which is that we have, and it's been, I'm just going to reiterate, we have all these different departments that are, that have all these wants. And we put all this energy and effort, you know, you're going through this, they're due soon, and then it gets into a budget document that comes to us in March, and then it's voted on in April and May. And what you don't see, is you might say, "Okay, well, here's this fire inspector that's going to help, you know, potentially save, you know, a lot of property, potentially save lives." But you don't see, well, what about the request from the police department that is potentially going to save lives? What about the request from the DPW that's necessary to keep our drinking water clean? What about the request from, you know, the library that helps with childhood literacy? And so, we're picking these things, it's almost like, well, if it doesn't make it through, you know, the administration's review, we'll just wait, I'll throw it in at the budget. And then, at that point, it's just kind of like a standalone thing, like, hey, you know, that's not that much more money, and it's a valuable thing, so let's vote on it. I just don't like setting that precedent, that we're just going to keep doing this over and over and over. And it, I mean, it happened when we passed this budget, with the fire lifts, it's happening It's happening again when we're amending this budget. It'll happen probably in, in May again this year. Let me ask you, Mr. Yanez. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
That's okay.
But, but I'd like to know, because you have the experience. Can you explain to me why a sworn firefighter has to be doing the fire inspections and it couldn't be a situation like Mr. Vanderpool outlined, where you hire? It, it would seem, it would seem crazy to say we're going to hire full-time sworn police officers to go out and do code enforcement. The model that he outlined is working. I am, you know, I have no experience in the fire service, and I have no idea really of what a fire inspector is actually doing. What is the benefit of that fire inspector being a sworn firefighter?
So, a question, Mr. Mayor. Would it be possible for us to maybe recess for a few minutes and have the fire chief arrive and answer some of these questions? I know that Mr. Yanez has a lot of knowledge in this department, but I think hearing from the actual fire chief might be helpful in regards to this because I want to make sure we get it completely right.
I'll be honest, I'm not really comfortable interrogating a city employee. The fire marshal's here. If I wanted to, I would. But I mean, but. Ask Mr. Allen.
But I'm okay.
But, well, you're a colleague and you're a policymaker. You have the background. So I, I'm more comfortable, I mean, look, it's not my decision to make. If the council wants to recess for Chief Edmund to get here, we can. I don't think it's that necessary. I mean, I think we got four votes anyway.
Well, I'll yield to Councilman Yanez. I just wanted to make sure. I, I don't want to have him speak for it when someone else might be more qualified, but I, I will yield to Mr. Mayor. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Yanez, you don't have to answer.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
I'm curious to know what your perspective is on this.
So, so we have, in our fire department, and obviously, we're a union fire department, we're, we have a, a contract that we work under. We are a, a seniority-based department. That means when one guy leaves, everybody moves up. And so that's how it's always been in the, in, in all the 40-hour positions, right? So if the, if the training instructor retires, that job is posted and, and somebody applies for it and gets hired, and, and then everybody underneath them moves up one, right? That's, that's how you get to be, how you get to be chief. And so that's how it's always been with the fire inspection division as well. When, when I hired on in 1995, I believe we had a fire marshal and six inspectors, I think. I think we're at four inspectors now. Our city has only grown. So anyways, I'm, I'm getting off track. So that's why we have a sworn, we don't really swear in firefighters, you know, we take note of the city, but that's it. But that's how we, that's how we've always had a rank and file, someone from extinguishment generally move into the inspection division.
And is this a person, I mean, the model we're using right now, the fire inspectors, do they do fire extinguishment? Do they do, do they ride on a fire truck? They don't?
They're busy doing inspections. They don't have time to ride a fire truck.
Okay, so it's like, it's a union issue, that that's, the union calls for the next man up or next woman up is, gets promoted into that role?
Yes. Yeah, seniority, seniority promotion, yes.
Okay. I'd like to know more about the fire inspection, frankly. I, I mean, I, no, no disrespect to, to the firefighters, no disrespect to the model that we have. It's worked very well, and it's served us very well. But it seems to me that doing fire inspections is a different job classification than putting out fires.
It is.
Going to emergency scenes. So I'm not sure I understand why, like, if, if we, if we're saying, this is a need for the public, the public is at risk because buildings are not being inspected, and we're not getting to them, we're years behind. And if Mr. Vanderpool is saying, for the cost of a fire inspector, I could hire two or three part-timers that do more fire inspections, and we get more protection, and we get more compliance, and we get a safer community, or we can hire one, because that's the way the union's always done it, what's more important here? Is, is the public safety more important, or is the fire union's way of always doing it more important? So until I can get that, and unless I'm making it, like, weighing two things and I'm missing something here, maybe I am, but I'm not comfortable just voting this through. I'd like to have an explanation of why that other model, which seems to protect the public more, it's a more efficient use of our city resources and taxpayer dollars, why that wouldn't be the model that we use. So, Mr. Vanderpool.
I'm sorry. Can I go, or do you?
But, Mr. Vanderpool, I'd like to respond. I don't.
Yeah, let's, I'll take turns.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just also wanted to comment because I know it's an important vote for city council, and Councilman Radke questioned the, the fire chief's position on this. I spoke to Chief Edmunds at length last night over this very topic. He is not recommending the fire inspector position at this time. In fact, he mentioned he was going to call Council, Councilman Yanez today to kind of share his concern about doing it at this time. Now, that's what he conveyed to me. If there's any other discussions going on, I haven't been privy to those, but I wanted you to know what the, a fire chief conveyed to me last evening.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you the last word on that, Henry.
Yeah, I, boy, I would love for the chief to call me and, and tell me why after, he's been here a year, he understands and knows why we don't need another fire inspector. That's, that would be a great conversation to have, and I encourage you, I encourage you. As a matter of fact, I, I move that you, you have him call me, and so I can have that conversation with him. It was, it was the new fire chief who stood in front of us, who told us that we were woefully behind in commercial fire inspections. And I remember saying at the time, don't look at your boss, when he said it. That's, that's just amazing. I will just, so just a couple of things here, Mr. Mayor. You know, the, the term emergency funding was brought, this is not emergency funding. We're amending the budget. We can do whatever we want. We're city council, for crying out loud. If we wanted to cut six positions, the city administration would just have to deal with it. Adding one more fire inspector, we're going to have firefighters retire coming up. We just, we just promoted a battalion chief who's leaving at the end of the month. So people come and people go. You know, I, with all due respect to my colleague who I love dearly, this is our lane. This is our lane. We're here to protect the health, safety, and general welfare, and yet, we get direction from city administration. They're the ones who talk on a regular basis and so forth, but the fact of the matter is, this is our lane. It's been six months since we had this discussion. And may I remind my colleagues, when I proposed this and we took the vote, the vote was six to one against, and part of the reason why we voted against this is because we would have had to raise taxes, if I recall, if I recall correctly, Ms. Varney, I think you told me it was going to be $3 per household per year to fund one fire inspector. And that was a bridge too far. And the vote on, on the budget from city council was five to two. Two members of this council felt that we were not being honest because we were taking money out of the reserve fund to, to pay for the budget. Now fortunately for us, it all worked out in the end. But the fact of the matter is, we dipped into our savings to, to pass this current budget. People thought that that was dishonest. We should, we should have raised taxes to pay for it. And, you know, so here we are again. I, I, now we have the money to pay for it, and it's an issue. You know, we just heard from the city manager, lar, again, large numbers, I don't know what the percentages are, large numbers. What we didn't hear of buildings being inspected, what we didn't hear was the numbers of building, buildings not being inspected. I'd like to know how many buildings haven't been inspected in over five years or more. That would be a great number to know. We had, we paid for a manpower study. Manpower study told us what we needed. Well, where's the plan to fill those positions? And where is the plan? We, again, we had this discussion six months ago. I wanted to, to hire another fire inspector. It got voted down. It's had, there's been six months to have a plan put together of how we're going to move forward on our fire inspection division. No plan put forward. And, and that includes the, the retiree program. I mean, that sounds like, that sounds like a great program. Why hasn't it been implemented or at least negotiated with the, with the firefighter union? You know, more time? Again, six months. Our assisted living facility issue has been a problem for years. It was a problem when I worked here. And I've been gone for eight years, nine years this month. And it was a problem back then. It's still a problem, and we still haven't dealt with it. I appreciate the thoughts and comments of all my colleagues. I, I, I respect all their positions on this. The fact of the matter is, we were willing to dip into the reserve fund to hire, to advance our budget back in June, I, and now we have a way to pay for it. This is not emergency funding. I don't understand why we don't want our city to be safer. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yanez. But like I said, I mean, my, my vote today, my no vote on this is not because I don't want the city safer. I think there might be a way to make the city even safer than what you're proposing without adversely impacting the fire union one bit. Not one member in the fire union would be adversely impacted by that. And it would be, seemed to me to be a net positive, but maybe I'm wrong. Maybe Mr. Vanderpool is wrong. We just haven't had the opportunity to study that yet, and before jumping into this, I would like that. With regard to the deputy police chief position, I, I'm not sure what we're doing here either. I'm not sure how this is going to impact the pending negotiations. I mean, I would, to the extent that this is making policy that the city administration then needs to follow, 100% on board. However, I would rather it be treated something like what we do at the end of council meetings when a council member has a project that they want to see advanced. You know, I would say, without objection, you know, this is just an example, I'm not doing it right now, but without objection, I would like to direct the city administration to negotiate an MOU with the command union to create a deputy chief position and bring that to the city council for approval within 30 days. That's what I would say. And then, then it would be, then if, if everybody agreed on that, then boom, they go, they've got to go negotiate it, they've got a deadline, they've got a timeline to do it, and then when they come back, they say, well, this is what it's going to cost. And we say, okay, well, then amend the budget to make sure that that's how much money we have to hire them. I'd like to hire the deputy chief tomorrow, but there's a little bit of a process there. I, you know, I've talked to Mr. Vanderpool about this, and God bless, one of the best city managers in the country, but still a city manager, this is a bureaucratic problem. It's like, we got to negotiate this, negotiate that, negotiate this. Whereas in the private sector, if, if the CEO was like, man, I could sure use a number two, they'd hire the number two the next day. Our police chief definitely could use the help of a deputy police chief. I think our chief is doing an incredible job. I think our police department is doing an incredible job. They're, they're leaders in the state of Michigan, and they've done it all without the, the help of a deputy police chief. For a city our size, we should have one. 100% in support of the policy of hiring a deputy chief. But it does strike me as a bit putting the cart before the horse. I don't know whether this is going to hamstring us in negotiations or not. Frankly, as Mr. Yanez said, we're just amending the budget. We don't have to do it. We do it, we do it at the six-month point of the year, just because that's sort of like a nice guidepost, but we can do it anytime we want. And frankly, a lot of our city council meetings involve budget amendments. I might say most of them do. You just don't even know because they're buried in the consent agenda, and it's like, you know, we thought this was going to cost $13,000, but instead it cost $14,000, so we're amending the budget. We can amend the budget at any time. I would give clear direction to the city administration to negotiate a, a contract with whatever union needs to be negotiated with, to create a deputy chief position and fill it as soon as possible. And secondly, to, to get some more information about the, about the fire inspections and what the most cost-effective way of getting the most fire inspections done possible is. So that's why I'm going to be voting no on the amendment. So I guess we need a roll call vote. Mrs. Ryska.
Mrs. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Kosky?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Mr. Yanez?
Yes.
Mrs. Yarco?
No.
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Okay, the motion fails, four to three. So we need another motion. It's suggested action number two.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to adopt the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance for the fiscal year 2021, '22 fiscal year as introduced. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
I think we've talked enough. I have, anyway.
Council, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Yanez?
I don't think we've talked enough. I, you know what, I, I think you're, I, I appreciate your comments. I think you're absolutely right, at least in, in your perspective on, on getting more information. I don't know that any of these positions are so critical that they, they, we can't go another month or so without them. I don't know that we should be making any more decisions on hiring any more personnel until at least after strategic planning, when city administration can bring ideas to us on how they're going to pay for all this stuff, including ideas on how to pay for the, the deputy police chief and get more inspections done in the city, no matter how they do it, whether they hire inspector, they hire retirees that are still certified, you know, whatever. But I think that we can wait another, until the first meeting in February, after our strategic and planning session, to move forward with this. So I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote no on, on this amendment, but I would move that we postpone this until the first meeting in February. I make that a motion.
I will support that.
It's moved and supported. This is a, this is a time-certain motion, which is not subject to debate. The motion is to postpone the adoption of the Appropriations Ordinance Amendment to the first meeting in February.
Yes, sir.
It's been moved and supported. Ms. Ryska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Zarco?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Mr. Yanez?
Yes.
Mrs. Yarco?
No.
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
No.
Mrs. Schmidt?
No.
Okay, motion fails, three, four. Mr. Yanez, you still have the floor?
Oh, I'm all set, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Mrs. Zarco?
I thank you, Mayor Taylor, and, but I still would like for administration to bring up at strategic planning, the deputy police chief position as to how we can, if you can start negotiations on it, I would love that, and also the fire inspector. And I would also like to know if the fire union would be willing to let junior members of the department be trained for fire inspections so they could do it in off-hours. They're still our employees, they're still in the union, they would just have additional, additional work. So hopefully, we can do that.
Anyone else?
Was that without objection, or?
Well, I, I'm not, no, let me, let me flesh us out a little bit. As I outlined it during my comments, I mean, if we, I, I don't know that now would necessarily be the right time to do it while we're debating a different motion. Would it be more appropriate to do it at the end of the council meeting? But if, if I were to say, like I said, you know, we're directing you to negotiate a MOU with the appropriate union for the hiring of a deputy chief position, and we're going to give you X number of days, and then we, and we want you to do that. That's something that we can do and give direction to the city administration, right? Okay. And I think with the deputy chief, that's a little bit clearer because it's, there's no, it's not like we're going to have a, you know, retired police chief come on and then have, you know, three retired police deputy chiefs, right? So whereas the fire inspectors, there might be other options available. But would that require, Mr. Vanderpool, what you outlined, would that require an MOU with the fire union?
Yes, Mayor, it would.
Yes, Mayor, it would, and I do not want to sound bureaucratic. We're happy to follow through on that direction of counsel, but we do have to coordinate that. We've got to get two unions together. Sometimes it takes weeks, and we can't demand, we can't summon them. We, you can't unfortunately. It'll take some time. So I would hope that you'll give us some latitude on the time. The direction will be clear. That time, though, we need some latitude, and even strategic planning would be ambitious.
I want to make it clear, I guess, I don't want to necessarily say, do it in 30 days and then, you know, you got a hard time, you know. I can't get a meeting with like, you can't get any meeting now in 30 days.
Mr. Mayor, maybe this should be moved to the end of the meeting so we can discuss it firmly.
It will be, it will be. We're going to discuss it at the end of the meeting, too. We're going to discuss it at the end of the meeting, which, I'm not sure, are we halfway through the meeting?
We have closed session, too.
Okay, so give it some time for the next few minutes to see how much time you need for that, because I guess I just want to close on this issue by saying, by voting no and by the way this unfolded tonight, I don't want to give the impression that this is not a high priority for me. Personally, a deputy police chief is a very high priority for me. And, and Mr. Yanez, I understand what you're saying, and there's, it's irrefutable what you're saying. It's absolutely irrefutable that we are hearing from the experts, and the experts are saying we're not doing enough fire inspections. Let's figure out, let's create a policy and a plan to do the most possible fire inspections in the most, in the most cost-effective way. That's my opinion. So I don't know that there's anything more that needs to be said on the motion on the floor, which is to adopt the First Amendment to the Appropriations Ordinance for the fiscal year 21-22 as amended.
As introduced.
As introduced.
I'm sorry, as introduced at the last council meeting. Is there anyone else with anything on this? If not, Mrs. Ryska, can we have a roll call vote?
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yanez?
No.
Mrs. Yarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kasky?
No.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Zarski?
Motion carries five, two. Thank you, Mrs. Ryska. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda with the omission of item 9D, which was moved to consideration 10C? If not, counsel, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kasky?
Move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider nominations to the City of Sterling Heights Board of Review. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we have one open position. This is a council appointment to the Board of Review to a partial term ending June 30th, 2024. This is the two-step process. Is there anyone who'd like to make a nomination?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Resolve to nominate Patrick Rye for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Review at the January 18th, 2022 regular city council meeting.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider appointments to the City of Sterling Heights Arts Commission. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, there are two open appointments to the Arts Commission. This is a city council appointment to partial terms ending June 30th, 2024 and June 30th, 2025. We'll need to take this in two steps. Is there anyone who'd like to make an appointment?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Resolve to appoint Debbie Tao to the Arts Commission to a partial term ending 6/30/2025, subject to the appointee meeting and qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Quickly, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Thank you. She was highly recommended by the liaison for the Arts Commission. I think she'll be an excellent resident, residential voice on the Arts Commission. She likes what we're doing, and she wants to just contribute. So I think she'll be a great addition.
Great, thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else, counsel? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the 2024 ending date. Is there anyone who'd like to make another appointment to the Arts Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Resolve to appoint Barbara Ann Chudzik to the Arts Commission to a partial term ending June 30th, 2024, subject to the appointee meeting and qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Barbara was also brought forward by the Arts Commission liaison. I think she'd be a good addition there. She supports our public arts program and wants to contribute.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Taylor, was, Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
Was that 2024 or 2025? Did you 25 first and then 24? Okay.
Yep. Any other discussion? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is item D from the consent agenda originally. This is a consideration item to approve an agreement for construction and maintenance of non-motorized waterfront trail to facilitate the construction and maintenance of a 1.35-mile, non-motorized recreational gravel trail along the north side of the Red Run Drain and Sterling Relief Drain between Metropolitan Parkway and Shainer. They really write these things poorly when they don't expect you to have to read them.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to whoever wrote it. We are going to have a presentation from long-awaited. Mr. Jamie Burton is here from Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, and you've got more than you bargained for today. We're thankful to have you here.
Thank you. Will that be put up on the screen, the presentation?
I, that's above my pay grade.
All right, well, yeah, there it is.
There it is.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. I'm Jamie Burton with Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark. I'm pitching in for Brent Bayshaw. With me tonight is also Jeff Bednar from the Public Works Office. Full disclosure, while I am proud to say that Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark does a tremendous amount of work with Sterling Heights, I'm also working for Macomb County Public Works, Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner, and all sorts of other parties in this really great project that this is just one little part of. So Brent asked me, and the city manager asked me to pitch in on a brief presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. So a number of years ago, Oakland County, who is the fiduciary and kind of the secretary of the Drainage Board for the Red Run, put together a project working with their partners, Macomb County, a maintenance and operation plan for the Red Run Drain. Part of that project is to do a bunch of stream bank stabilization behind Freedom Hill. Freedom Hill is an old landfill. Actually, there's landfill on both sides of the road, and the river wants to move. There's a project to do a number of, spend a great deal of money on stream bank stabilization. As the project developed, it became obvious and through Macomb County planning that a waterfront trail or a trail amenity along there would be a great addition while we were working on it. You've got the trail along Metro Parkway, and obviously your sidewalks along Shainer Road. Since we're, and I'll get into it, since we're doing the work there anyways, it seemed like a great opportunity to do so. So Red Run is governed by the Red Run Inter-County Drain Board. Sterling Relief Drain is an offshoot, is a tributary to that, shown on the map here. To the left, behind the church, that is at the intersection of Metro Parkway and Shainer. Sterling Heights owns the underlying property for that drain easement. And the Drainage Board, Sterling Relief Drainage Board, holds an easement over the top of the entire drain for drainage. So you are the property owner. They are on your property by easement to provide drainage for Sterling Heights. So we're, again, we're working on a 2022 project. We are out, we put this project out for bids, and we're ready to go to construction in mid-2022. So there's kind of the, that's it. So to access the work on Sterling Relief Drain and Red Run, the project will involve putting in a haul road. So we need to, big equipment in here to put, to just facilitate this construction. It is basically going to be a road base, full-depth road base to get out here. And then the thought was, why would we remove that if Macomb County and other parties were talking about a trail? So a few years ago, they looked for support for a grant application that has gone through. I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. But once this trail is built, we take it from a road to a trail. Somebody needs to manage it after that, maintain it. And we're here tonight to ask for the agreement, not only to build this work, but then for Sterling Heights to maintain just the portion on the Sterling Relief Drain. Macomb County will handle the part behind Freedom Hill. Okay, so it's a 1.3-mile gravel trail, goes right behind the area, right along the drain. With the drain improvements that's out there, with the plantings, this is going to be an amenity, not just a throughway, right? We're doing a lot of great works, a lot of tree plantings, a lot of things. If you remember what was done on Sterling Relief on the other side of Shainer, we're going to mirror image that on the Sterling Relief side on the east side of Shainer, and then keep that kind of going through Red Run. There's no cost whatsoever to the city for the installation of the trail. The trail is being funded by grant funds and by the Red Run Project and by Department of Roads through the Macomb County Executive's Office. There is a cost. It's been estimated by city staff to estimate about $17,000 to maintain this trail. This trail is going to be an aggregate trail, that fine gravel, like kind of slag kind of material on top of a road base. There's been talks of 5Ks. There's been talk of all sorts of ability to use this loop in various ways. It's 10-foot wide, six-foot wide mowed zones on the north side. So this is right behind the church property. It's about 250 feet away from the homes that they're on Broughton Drive. So this, there is not residential that'll back up to this. If you drive, if you're, if you slow down, if you're not going 45 down Shainer, and you look at this, go this way, you'll see that the old excavation of the mound from the drain, the spoils from the, when they dug the drain, kind of run along that north side. So it's kind of a little bit of a berm. This trail runs right along the top of that berm. So it'll be pretty high and dry out there. And so it's not really going to be subject to flooding like further down in the Red Run and other areas. It is going to be built ADA compliant and ASHTO compliant for bicyclists. So both of those will be covered in the design and construction. So obviously provides great recreational opportunities. We've had a lot of that conversation here already tonight. On 5K events, Freedom Hill events, the various walks, there's, that loop is significant. That's 1.3 miles. You can kind of almost double that just on the perimeter, let alone loops with inside there. And there's support, community support for adding some 5K event there. It is a better way for the police to police this area when they can ride bikes or go through that. It is a full, it's a 10-foot wide road, essentially, but each end is going to be secure with bollards and fencing and bollards so that we can get ATVs, snowmobiles, and others to not necessarily have quick access to this area. So the grant funding will also cover plantings, kind of repeating myself here a little bit. On the Sterling Relief side, if you look on the west side of Shainer to the east side of Shainer, we're going to match that aesthetic. So that is going to be a more naturalized, flowering, butterfly, pollinator-type atmosphere that we just didn't have enough money to do in the last few projects that were done. And then they'll carry that trail around all the way to the other end. So that's the, you've got everything else in your agenda packet, and I'll be happy to answer any questions through the mayor.
Okay, so we'll, we're going to go to the audience for any questions first, and then we'll have a motion made. And while we're deliberating if we have any questions, we can bring you back up. So thank you, Jamie. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this, this item?
Hi, Counsel. I just had one question pertaining to it. I know that most parks in the city have operating hours. I was curious if this trail was going to have operating hours as well. Is it going to be like closed to the public in the evenings or anything like that? That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you, you know that would, Kyle's here. Mr. Langoyes, you want to come up here? Anyone else in the audience with?
Mr. Romano?
With any, Mr. Romano, of course. Well, I didn't think you stayed all this time just to see us.
I'll be further, Mr. Langoyes. Go ahead.
The answer to that question is yes. This trail would be held to the same operating hours as the rest of our park system, the months of April through October, that's 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Sorry, April through September, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. October through March, we're 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So we would follow the same open hours or operating hours as the rest of our park system.
Thank you, Mr. Langoyes. Mr. Romano?
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. You think your meetings are long? Imagine 13 people. Anyway. First of all, this is grant-funded. I'm 100% in favor of this, of the trail here. I'm also a county commissioner. I appreciate that the mayor recognized me as such. I'm also on the Drain Board for the Sterling Relief Drain. So the questions that, that were given to me by residents at the second city hall, which is Dodge Parkoni, take a little plug in there, was where do the people park? The people that have these bikes attached to their trunks, where are they going to park their cars? They can't park them on Shainer, so that leaves us the residential streets, which is probably used right now by the residents, and that's their first question. Their second question was, when Freedom Hill has a venue, boy, we're going to get a lot of freebies out there, aren't we? A lot of people going to go up there, sit down, bring their chairs, go on the bike trail, listen to that? That's great. Who's going to clean up the garbage afterwards? Second question. Third question, what about, I heard mention about the ATVs and the four-wheelers. Are we going to close it in the wintertime so that's not accessible? And who's going to maintain the locks on that for the wintertime? 10:00 PM at night, folks, you know how voices carry over an open area? People are going to be using that bike trail, and there's residents across that drain that are going to be listening to that? You know, it's, there, nobody has really said to me they're resisting the fact that the bike trail is there. I think it's a great idea. But we have a sidewalk there already that goes from Van Dyke all the way up to Utica Road. Why do you need a bike trail? That's the third question. I know it's a grant, but beside the point. That, that's, and that sidewalk is rarely used in the summertime. Most people use Dodge Park, which is probably 10 times better than that short bike trail, which is, I believe, a one mile and, a mile and three, mile, 1.3, 1.35 miles. I understand it. I understand what's going in there. I think it's, it's a good idea. I just, I couldn't honestly answer the questions. What, why would they want to put a bike trail when there's never been one there before? The residents are super happy the way it is. They showed a picture of some trees and some flowers, and that's not there. In fact, Mr. Yanez and I planted trees over there, and they're probably 30, 40 feet apart. So that was part of the problem. It's a good idea, but do we really need it? I mean, it's a freebie. Of course, we're still paying it when this grant is still our money, but it's a freebie. But I mean, if you tell them about five miles, that's a great idea. 1.3 miles? And we got to maintain it at a cost of $17,000 a year for the city? And then we're going to have the liability, which I think is probably no greater than the skate park. I just, I just, I just didn't know how to answer this, especially the one was, where are the people going to park? What are they going to do when the shows are on at Freedom Hill and all the people decide to bring their chairs out there? These are, I don't want to be redundant, but those were the questions that were asked for me. And if I can get answers to that, I'm sure I could satisfy a lot more people that don't have to keep answering questions when I go for breakfast. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Have a good evening, and have a Happy New Year, and a safe one.
You, too, Mr. Romano. Always, always great to see you. If that's 100% support, I'd be curious to see what 50% support is.
He's a county commissioner. You think you could ask? He's a county.
Mr. Inks, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year and good evening to you, Counsel and city administration. I just wanted to briefly express my support for this proposal. My wife and I have biked along the Freedom Metro Trail, and I think having another access point to that trail is a great idea. One of the downsides of the Freedom Metro Trail is that it follows Metro Parkway, so there's not very much scenery. It's pretty loud, and having a quieter little endpoint that you could detour, I think would be, would be nice for the residents. So I'd encourage you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, Counsel, we need a motion. Mr. Yanez, you pulled it off. I'll let you make a motion if you want, or you can pass.
No, I'm going to pass.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
I'm just going to, it's D, so. Resolve to approve the agreement for construction and maintenance of non-motorized waterfront trail in temporary construction agreement and authorize the city manager to sign all documents required in conjunction with his approval on behalf of the city.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Radke?
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, you know, I think this is an excellent amenity, and I'm so glad that the county has come forward with it. I want to commend, I did not get the gentleman's name from the county, but you gave a great presentation on a lot of the concerns. You know, Commissioner Romano, in full-throated support of the proposal, because that's what he said up here at the podium, he says, how, what about ATVs and snowmobiles? Well, there'll be bollards. There'll be a way to. Well, there'll be bollards, there'll be a way to prevent access that we don't want while allowing police access and bikes into the procedure. Who'll clean the garbage? Well, according to this agreement, I think the city is responsible for maintaining it. But I will tell you that if people are going back there and littering and creating a problem, we're gonna deal with it. It's like we deal with it at Freedom Hill. We have concerts up here in the summertime every Thursday, and we don't have a problem with littering. This would be, be an addition to our parks program. It'd be a nonlinear trail, but just be one more addition to our parks program. And at $17,000 a year, that's a great deal. And we're talking about, at least I am, talking about buying so more elementary, which is gonna cost a million dollars, then it costs more to maintain. $17,000 for a 1.3 mile trail, which then all of our residents can use to bike? That's a steal at twice the price. Come on, that's a great deal. Where will people park? Well, that's a good question that I don't have an answer for, but they do have parking lots at Freedom Hill. And through the chair to Representative County, please remind your name, I had to step out for the meeting briefly, I'd like to see if you could help me with that. Jimmy Burke?
Jamie Burton.
Okay, wonderful. Well, through the chair to Mr. Burton. Would the county be willing to set aside a parking area to make sure that people could access this trail with their mountain bikes and things like that?
I, you can answer if you know the answer.
I don't, I don't know the answer. So I don't represent the exec's office or planning or the folks that run Freedom Hill. I, I can, I can elaborate on just a, a little bit on that, in that Freedom Hill is, is open, is a county park, and throughout the, the design of this, maybe Jeff can weigh in here as well, we always see people out there doing stuff, walking, there is kind of a goat path trail through here already, and, and then the Freedom Trail is literally right across, across Red Run Drain from there. So there is no new parking, and I would have to let that be deferred through administration to ask the Macomb County to open that parking lot. But that parking lot is generally open all the time. I wanna make something clear, if I may, is that the city of Sterling Heights jurisdiction ends basically behind the church, your maintenance. So if you are all the way down truly behind Freedom Hill, or up on the corner where you can get to now off the sidewalk in Freedom Hill to listen to a concert, that is all gonna be maintained by the county themselves.
That's a great point.
Last comment I wanna make is you would reserve the right within this agreement, and I will defer to legal counsel if I am wrong, that if you have problems with access or you can post it to, you can post this to your security, to your limitations, to your maintenance on your portion of this trail at any point. You, that is your trail, so just wanted to clarify that while I was.
No, I think that's a, that's a great point. You even further answered my questions. We're getting a 1.3 mile trail, but the, the county's putting the trail in no matter what. We're just taking our little portion of it behind the Sterling Relief Drain, which they're gonna build anyways because they have to get heavy equipment back in there. So, I guess the agree, the thing here is, do we want a trail that they're already building? Or do we wanna make them tear out a trail that they've built after they've built it? And that seems to me to be not common sense, especially at $17,000 a year or whatever it costs. I'll take 50, 'cause at that point we have a wonderful new amenity for our residents that's not in the north section of the city. And I can tell you, when I went door to door before this campaign, knocked on over 3,000 doors in this city, one thing people told me, in the south end especially, is that they feel excluded from a lot of the amenities being added here. And it's a, I see people not, not even the audience, it's 100% true. When you look at a map that we looked at earlier through the Parks for Creation Department, the area that surrounds 15 and a half mile relief is one of the areas that does, that lacks park access for the residents. This would be a perfect way, it's not, it's not an end-all, but it'd be a perfect way to add those folks in and make sure that they are included in our city. And we're promoting biking, and here's the other best part, 'cause as someone who runs around, I understand it, when you bike down 16 mile road, for example, there's a tremendous number of curb cuts. You're always looking to your right for motorists to pop out of a subdivision or a driveway or some other area. And when you're biking on the street, people are, they'll be like, oh, they're on the street, I have to watch for them. But when you're on a sidewalk, I don't think that cars monitor it just as well for bikes. And I think it creates another point of conflict where people can get hit by cars. With a 1.3 mile bike path, you're not gonna be hit by a car. The only car that's ever gonna be on that trail is a Sterling Heights police car, and you're gonna see it coming 'cause it's gonna be lights and sirens for a reason. So I think this is both a safety issue and it's a tremendous additional amenity. I mean, we, we put a path from Delia Park upward that cost us, I think it was a million dollars. And here we're getting a nice path for almost nothing. And I, I would be remiss, I would, I'd be not fiduciary responsible. I would not be. Common sense defies it to not accept their generous offer. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll be voting in favor, and I urge all my colleagues to vote in favor as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Burton, did I hear you correctly, or maybe I misunderstood? Did you say there was gonna be fencing on both sides of the trail?
So, there is already existing fencing that on Shainer Road, okay? That is, that is solid fencing all the way up and down through the, this Sterling Relief Drain is basically fenced in.
Correct.
And there's a gate there, but that gate is closed as for maintenance. There will be an opening in the gate with bollards, but that's where we're leaving it. That doesn't mean that you couldn't put a gate on there if you wanted to at some point. Now, there's not a gate at the other end because that connects up directly up to 16 Mile, but there will be bollards and the control for vehicles, limit vehicle access, with plantings, bollards and trees and other things. So there's not a fence on the other end.
So what's to say this goes in, and this isn't directed to you, I'm not sure who this would be directed to? Let's say this goes in, it's 10 feet wide, so it can accommodate trucks, that when Freedom Hill has a concert and they need an extra exit, they don't use this trail as an exit because it could be exited from the parking lot?
So, I can answer that, because at either end, you, you cannot, if you were to go off the back of the parking lot to get down to this trail from the Freedom Hill parking lot, you would have to have a four wheeler, a four-wheel drive, and you'd be taking matters in your own hands. Now, no, if this trail, once this trail's in, they're not physically connected to the parking lot. Okay, the parking lot's at a higher elevation, this trail's down low.
But it could be.
Yeah, it could be, but then at the, at the Shainer end, it's fenced and bollards, so they can't get out. And the other end, you're coming into basically where the bridge is over, over Red Run, where the Freedom Hill is there, which has a probably about a 10-foot vertical separation between the road and there. So now you'd have to be driving on the sidewalks along six Metro Parkway to get to a vehicle access. So I just, well, certainly that can be done, and we've done it in our vehicles as we were doing the survey work. I think we would also, I think any vehicle driving on a public sidewalk would probably not fare too well with your pleas.
But my, I guess my point is that it will come out onto Shainer.
But there will be a fence and bollards where a car will not be able to get through without a key to the bollard to get out to Shainer Road.
So if our police officers need to get in there?
They have, it's a knockbox key where they go in there, they lay the bollards down and they drive over it, and then they put the bollards up. Or maintenance vehicles can go in there. But a car will not be able to squeeze through that area without significant damage.
Okay, and as far as the path on 16 Mile and curb cuts, there are two curb cuts from Utica Road to Shainer Road, and that's only the Freedom Hill entrance. There's no other curb cuts, and that's the span of what this trail is going to be. So curb cuts on 16 Mile are not a reason for me to think that 16 Mile, the path on 16 Mile is not a safe path. Mr. Romano, you're right, there's no such thing as a free lunch. Because the county wants us to maintain it for $17,000 a year. So that's not a gift, that has, that's a gift with strings. So I am gonna listen to what my colleagues have to say, and I will vote when it's time. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did, I did pull this off the consent agenda because I had a number of questions. And the questions started all coming to me as I'm going through the packet. And the one thing, and Mrs. Yarko has it pulled up, so. The, the one thing that really caught my eye was this rendering of these people using the park, and there's a wide gap in the gate that's already there. And I'm assuming the county still controls the gate, owns the gate? Yes, the fencing?
What picture is, what page is it on?
I'm sorry, 290 of our packet. It's just an artist's rendering. But it, what caught me was the, the, the couple and the gentleman is in the wheelchair, and, and my first thought is, is this pathway ADA compliant? Is there such a thing as ADA compliance on this type of gravel pathway? So that's one of the questions I have, is it ADA compliant?
Through the chair to the gentleman from Hubble Rock and Clark. Mr. Burton?
So yeah, ADA can be, ADA for outdoor spaces can be any type of material as long as it's hard-packed, wheelchair accessible at the right width, slopes and depth. You can use woodchips, you can use grass, or asphalt concrete, the normal stuff. Being gravel's right there in the middle, this is very typically used for a lot of trails, a lot of hike bike trails that are all 100% ADA compliant. And ASHTO, which guide, is the guidance, it's not really regulatory, but guidance regarding bicycle use. So yes, it will be ADA compliant through and through, and also ASHTO compliant as well.
And if you don't mind standing there for just a few minutes? I'll ask you all the questions I think that are pertinent to you. I mean, I played Little League on, on this stuff, right? I'm assuming it's the same kind of gravel, I see you got the, the aggregate base 21 AA?
Yeah, that's road, that's road gravel, that's the base, and then on top is like a, is a lighter slag.
That lighter slag. Is that dusty? There's a lot of people there, will dust go up in the air and float down the?
So, when it first goes in and it's first being used, the answer is yes. But as it, as it rains and the fines come out of it, right, where the dust comes, is it perfectly dust-free? Absolutely not. But it won't be, one bicyclist going down there won't be a dust storm, as I can picture Little League fields, right? No, but it, but it is relatively, there's not like the sand and the very, very fines in this material, which is what causes the dust when you drive on it. So when it first goes down, yes, but after a rain event or two, it will not be a dusty, you will not see a deuce of hazard dust trail if people are using their bicycles on it.
And, and I, I don't, I'm not sure if I heard you correctly or if I misinterpreted something, but are we, Sterling Heights responsible, responsible for all 1.35 miles or no? The county is going to handle, so how much of that path are we responsible for?
It's, it's about, I don't know the, it's about half a mile.
About half a mile?
Just a little over half a mile, but it's not half.
Little, about, little over 2,000 feet, right? I think I measured it on Google Earth yesterday, it's a little over 2,000 feet. Okay. So we got the flatter part of, of the trail, 'cause the slope on the, okay. I, I, I think I'm done with you, except, except, with the exception of, if you could introduce me to the guy who only does 45 on Shainer, I'd appreciate it. 'Cause you're either doing 65 or zero on Shainer, thank you very much.
I didn't wanna tip my own hand, so yes, sir.
So ADA compliant, so the other thing that, 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 the reason why I flagged this, and I, I did have a conversation with the city manager today, and he advised me that, you know, issues with easements automatically go into the consent agenda, so I appreciate that phone call and that information. But, you know, as I'm reading through the packet, and I read the letter from the county, they talk about the gift. And I, I got a lot of gifts in my life, but none of them cost $17,000. Certainly not $17,000 a year. And I also had many of the same questions that Commissioner Romano brought up, and I don't even know the people he's talking about at, at the breakfast place, but yeah, I have the same thing. So our, our, I'm, I'm concerned about patrolling back there, especially patrolling during concerts. You know, somebody has a couple too many pops and they find their way, they, oh, look at that cool trail down there. Are people going to park on the street in the subdivision and walk there instead of being tied up in traffic? Are people gonna, you know, go back there and, and be loud? I didn't realize, and I didn't see any bollards in, in any of the renderings here, so I think that answers the question about, you know, people on four wheelers or, or whatever. I mean, when I was a kid, and when I was 10, I had a minibike and there was, there was no boundaries, until you got caught, there was no boundary, so. But, so that also answered a question that I have. Through the, through the chair to Mr. Langwa. You're getting the French pronunciation.
I feel bad.
Kyle? So, what, what's the average expense, I guess, to maintain? It's about $17,000, so what are we spending $17,000 on? And that's, that's also wages as well as work, right?
The vast majority of that $17,000 estimate is grass cutting on each side of the trail. We have a contractor that we use to cut our grass in the city throughout all of our park system. The trail design calls for basically a grass shoulder on each side, which gives people an opportunity to get off the trail to rest, to congregate if they want to congregate and talk to somebody. So if they're stopping, they're not doing so on the trail, they can do so safely off the trail. The vast majority of that money ultimately is mowing that grass. Certainly there's, within that estimate, you know, X number of hours, you know, per, per day, week to drive the trail. It is a short trail, you know, in comparison, the Clinton River Trail along the Clinton River is five and a half miles, the Nature Trail is two miles approximately, so we are looking at a very small percentage of area that we're looking to kinda keep up with for litter control and an occasional grooming with the, with the equipment that we would have. So it is a, a pretty minor maintenance expense is what we are predicting on an ongoing basis. Being that it's not in a floodplain, that really takes away a lot of the maintenance that we also have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. And if I may even comment on your, your question about the dustiness. So we are using a slightly larger aggregate than a dusty material. It's not quite the diamond dust that you're thinking of. It's a slightly larger aggregate, sits very nicely, but it doesn't, doesn't blow away.
Is, is that compacted? You compacted, okay. Okay, well, I'm, I'm, oh, thank you very much. So I, I know I pulled this, and, and again, the reason why I pulled it, I, I was not comfortable with just pass, spending $17,000 a year of taxpayer dollars without discussion in, in the consent agenda. I thought that this really needed to have a discussion so everybody could have a, a voice in this. I'm, I'm definitely not against it. I, I recall walking the, the pathway from Delia Park to the Nature Center, and neighbors coming out, talking to us, there was a lot of concern about, you know, people hanging out in their backyards and so forth. And I don't think any of those concerns were realized. I am a little concerned about liability, I know that we're held harmless, but still, well, let me say it, through the chair to the, the city attorney. You've reviewed these documents, sir?
There's no liability, but you can go on, Mr. Kishubski.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
As Councilman Yanez said, I have reviewed these documents, yes.
And, and is, is there any situation that could happen, somebody twists an ankle, fall down, roll down into the, the water at the bottom of the? Is there any way that we could be sued from the use of this facility, pathway?
Mr. Yanez, I will say this, anyone can sue anybody if they have directions to a courthouse on $150.
Yes, that's, that's a lawyer joke, by the way.
It is.
And an old one.
With that said, the city enjoys a broad grant of governmental immunity, especially when it comes to pathways. It's not considered a sidewalk, so it's not within the exceptions of the general liability toward reform, so we don't have to worry about that. Is it conceivable that there could ever be liability? It'd be very, very rare that something like that could happen under governmental immunity.
Okay, thank you, sir. So in closing, I'll just say that, yes, I pulled this from the agenda because, or the consent agenda because I was very concerned about spending taxpayer dollars without, without any debate at all. Now that we've had the presentation and the Q and A, I am satisfied that I think the city will get its money worth, money's worth out of this project. I don't know that everybody in the city's gonna be coming there to bicycle or to walk, but I think a significant number of people. But I also believe that we're gonna have to keep an eye on this, and if we're gonna get complaints from the, the people that live on Brom and some of the other streets over there, if they find that there's people parking and going to the, going to the, walking to the concerts, or if people are being loud at the concerts, walking down from there or what have you, then that's gonna have to be addressed. But I, I, I don't believe that we're gonna see a number of the problems that people are concerned about. Those are same concerns that we've heard in other projects, and they just never come to fruition. So I am going to support this project, and thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yanez.
Thank you, Mr. Yanis. Anyone else? Mrs. Kuszywski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to the gentleman from Hubbell, Roth and Clark. Just clarify exactly what we're supposed to be responsible for. I have the map in front of me. Sterling Relief Drain behind the church. You said that there's going to be a berm there, and the path is going to be on the north side of the berm, and we would be responsible only from, what is it, Shaner over to where it connects to the Red Run Drain, correct?
So, the path will be on top of the berm as it runs along the Sterling Relief from Shaner to Red Run, and then if, you can kind of clearly on the aerial see where the church property kind of comes down, and it kind of lines up directly where the Shaner Relief Drain hits Red Run. So, right in that location, there's a property line. Actually, Consumers Energy owns a piece, then it's the park. From that point west, you will be responsible for the maintenance. That part east, you will not be. So, it's not really on the other side of the berm, it's kind of on the berm, and it kind of comes down to Red Run, and then the county takes it from, the county takes it from there. So, there's, it's kind of where those two water bodies come together. That's kind of the intersection.
That would be the end, the east end of what we would have to maintain, correct?
Correct, ma'am.
Where are the gates? There's one on Shaner, which we can lock, and then where's the other one, or is there another one?
There is not another one. Well, okay, there is gates at Freedom Hill to open the back parking lot, which is the old gravel lot, the overflow parking. So, there is gates there. But when you come up to Shaner, that is coming up to just a regular parking lot, that's behind a guard rail from 16 Mile, from Metro Parkway, down kind of low. So, there is no gates there, but there's bollards there to prevent motor vehicles or ATV, snowmobiles from getting in there. And we are going to, that area is kind of open now, we're going to close that off with some plantings, so that we discourage people from four-wheeling and access there. So, but there's not a fence on that end, ma'am.
My problem is, we're going to be paying $17,000 to maintain that walkway, that running path, whatever. When Freedom Hill first started, we had an issue with noise, tremendous issue. We had residents called red shirts that were very unhappy. Now, I understand that there is going to be a limit as to when this path is going to be open, that we, it will be according to our, our park rules, which means that 10 o'clock, we can close it. What time do the concerts end? What time do the concerts start? Are we going to have a gun, the people that say, okay, let's go for a walk behind the church, take our blankets, take our little picnic basket with our bottle of red stuff, and sit down and listen to some music? Or are we going to be able to lock that off? Now, there's a gate at one end, but no gate at the other end. So, this is telling me that we're really not going to have any control about who is going to be on that path in the evening, during the concert season, which means that I cannot answer any one of Mr. Romano's questions. And I see a whole lot of people, they may not have red shirts next time, they may have blue shirts, but I suspect that they're going to come back. So, with that said, why do Sterling Heights have to pay $17,000 to maintain it when they've gotten a $300,000 grant there, and isn't their obligation to maintain all drains? And doesn't that say Sterling Relief Drain? Doesn't that mean it's their job to clean it out and to keep it mowed?
So, I will attempt to answer your first question in engineering sense, which is, if it becomes a problem on your property, that there's nothing in this agreement that says you couldn't put another gate or fence at your, that property line. So, if that became a problem, then that could be added to fence your area off. Or, or it could be protocol, fence it off during concerts. Okay, there's the ability to do that. And that's not thousands of feet of fence, that's probably 50, 60 feet of fence that could be done in there. So, that's the first answer. The second is this, the grant was, the grant for the trail was started by, through MacComb County Planning and the Executive's Office, and then was supported through the Department of Roads. They brought that to the drainage board. The drainage board under the drain code is legally prohibited from maintaining recreational facilities. Their job is to make the water flow and the water be clean. So, this is not, the drain board, actually, it's not even the Sterling Relief Drain Board, the Red Run Drain Board is doing this project and has gathered all these bodies together, where these bodies or agencies have come to the Red Run Drainage Board, not even Sterling Relief. So, Sterling Relief Drainage Board is giving an easement. It's your property, we're asking for an easement. But the trail came through the Exec's Office, and while we can build, and we can leave our part for access under the grant, the grant pays for surfacing that, but the two drainage districts cannot maintain this trail as a recreational facility. It's the same way we can't operate canoe launches using drainage funds. So, that's why the drainage project can build it, but we cannot maintain it when it's done.
So, if we don't call it a hike back bike trail, and we just call it an access road, can they maintain it?
Yeah, but it will not be ADA, and it won't be snowplowed, and it won't be open to the public.
That answers my question. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Zarowski?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Jamie, don't go there. Sorry, you are the expert in residents today. So, if we would not approve this, what would happen?
If you don't approve this, I believe MacComb County Planning Exec's Office and the two drainage boards would have to attempt to keep their grant for Sterling Relief intact. Okay, so that's not just the trail, that's also the plantings. If we can't do one with the other, the plantings go away as well, okay? Or that becomes a drain project in the future, under the normal assessment process. And we, no gates, no trail, we leave the gravel in for access if that's what we so choose, or we ask our contractor not to put the gravel in, and we walk away. I would be, I don't want to be doomsday about it, except to say that the grant was written for access and plantings, and to decouple that, the plantings on Sterling Relief Drain, that property may go away with that grant. We would love, we would argue against that and try to keep that portion of it. But then all you're getting is the plantings, no access, and there's no trail.
If we don't approve it, our portion of it, you're not going to put the whole trail through?
I would imagine that this trail would fall apart.
Okay. And, but we still have the ability to gate off our side on the Shaner end, correct? That gate would stay, or that fence would stay?
We would, we would not take down the fence. We'd come through the maintenance gate that's already there and do our work, and then leave out the maintenance gate as, as Public Works has done for maintenance and the projects. There was a project done there last year to daylight the drains. We would come and go exactly as that project went, and we would move on.
Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you. Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
Thank you. First of all, this, I can walk to the drain, so it's part of my walking path. Would I use this? Probably. I probably would use this if it was put in. But I have concerns, just because I would use it, and I think it's, you know, it would be really nice, doesn't mean that it's the best interest of the residents that live there. I think you've resolved a lot of what people were afraid of, and one was motorized vehicles leaving Freedom Hill after a concert. So, I think that was part of it. The other thing was, the drain itself will not be altered. It stays exactly as it is.
The drain configuration is what it will be, it'll just be planted differently. All the, all the work on Sterling Relief Drain is all vegetation. There's no earthwork, it's just all vegetation to make it look like the other parts of it that were done.
Well, that's what scares me.
Except the, obviously, the trail, the trail will be graded and built along top of the berm.
But that was, I mean, I know that you're saying, you know, it's going to look like the west side of Shaner. I hope it doesn't. Because I know that you might have had great ideas in the renderings when that was put together, it's not maintained the way it should be. And that's, I mean, sometimes I think the only reason why they maintain the east side of Shaner better is because I know I walk past and make a phone call when things have to be taken care of. So, and then it's RDPW that are out there doing the trimming, and it certainly needs to be edged, because there's probably 10 inches of grass that cover the sidewalks when you're walking down Shaner. So, it does need some maintenance. I guess, and I would like to know who your landscaper is going to be in order to put this vegetation in, because the rendering that we have is, that's what it'll look like in 25 years. I'm not opposed to this, and you have relieved some of the concerns that I have. Because as you think about it, at first I thought, that is the last part of the drain that dries up. You know, that's the end. And, but it's not any different than families walking in Dodge Park along Clinton River. I mean, there's the same danger that you would have with the water there as you would with the drain. I can tell you right now how people get access with their four-wheelers to get out there in that gated area where they shouldn't be. But there's no way that you're going to stop a residence from putting up a gate so people still can't do it and do exactly what they're doing now. So, that, I mean, it is an issue. Even though you can put all of the precautions in place, it still happens. So, and you've answered the question about installing another gate or having it operational just when Freedom Hill is having a concert, and you could close that off so people couldn't exit that way. So, I think that's, those are the comments I have. Now, I have, through the chair to either Mr. Langlois or Ms. Farney, is there $17,000 in recreating recreation that'll cover the cost of maintaining this particular trail?
Mr. Langlois?
Currently, there is not money in recreating recreation to maintain this trail. It was not part of the pro forma of recreating recreation. This is a new amenity that has come up since that time. So, this would have to be presumably a budget amendment to increase the cost of mowing that would take place.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And then I guess my other question is, is when we were looking at the master plan tonight for Parks and Rec, this was just the beginning of that relief drain trail. So, I guess, you know, you could say that, yeah, we're going to, you know, approve this tonight, but then what happens when we get to the west side of Shaner? So, those are things that, you know, like I said, I would use this. I'd cut off getting to, you know, to the park. But, I don't know. I just, I have little faith in actually getting what we're promised. I guess that's the biggest thing. And for Mr. Romano, when he came up here and he says he was 100% in favor of something that was Parks and Rec, I thought, did you go to church? I mean, so, and Emily hasn't listened to you. I'm thinking, no, he didn't change his mind. But, yeah, so, I'm still on the fence about this, but I'll see what the mayor, I'm going to let the mayor take this home and see where it goes.
Okay, let's bring it home. All right. We are allowed to have nice things. We are allowed to have nice things. Barb, you said, I would use this, I would like it, it would be good for me, but I just don't know if it's in the best interest of the residents. That's the literal definition of the best interest of the residents. Kyle, can you come up here? How many miles of park do we have in the city? I'm sorry, how many miles of trail do we have in the city?
We have, you know, not including sidewalks, of course, but just trails in our parks. We have close to 25 miles of trail.
Okay. Rip them all up. Rip them all up and get rid of them, because they cost money to maintain, right? People can do things they're not supposed to do there, right? People can litter there, right? People might have to park somewhere to get to the trail, right? We don't always have a great trailhead for each one of our trails, right? I mean, you're an expert on this, and we've trusted you with our Parks and Recreation Plan over the past better part of a decade. We saw figures tonight that show that Sterling Heights had more properties sold in the last 12 months than any other city in Metro Detroit by a wide margin. Yeah, I thought it said Metro Detroit, but regardless. I know just because you have two things, it doesn't mean there's a nexus or a correlation between the two. But my God, that seems pretty, I mean, I haven't done political polling or studies, but every person I talked to at the park tells me, I moved into this city because of this. I wish we had this when my kids were young. Can you confirm this? Is this, are you getting the same feedback, too?
I believe that there's always going to be people who love what we have done with our park system, and we've done an amazing job. I think that is the vast majority of what we hear is people who love what we've done. We put an emphasis on non-motorized transportation. This would be a piece of, certainly a piece of that that continues to further our non-motorized, you know, goals around the city. Again, there's pros and cons to everything, and certainly those are what you guys are here to, you know, to weigh. I believe that having non-motorized transportation and non-motorized paths are certainly, the benefits outweigh any of the negatives, in my opinion.
I don't think it's close. I really don't. I mean, I don't mean to be glib here, but I can't believe we're having this conversation. Look at how much good our Parks and Recreation Program has done for the city of Sterling Heights in the last five years. I mean, it's transformed this city into one of the envies of every city in the state of Michigan, in terms of what we have, in terms of recreational opportunities. And we are getting, it is a gift. I mean, this is 1.3 miles, this is several acres, right, of property. It's, how much money is being, how much money is being spent to create this path?
$600,000.
$600,000. $600,000. If somebody gave me a $600,000 house for free, would I say, in Birmingham, would I say, no, I'm not taking that, because you know how high the taxes are there? I'm going to have to pay $17,000 a year in taxes on that house. No, I take it. The benefit to the residents to have these amenities is so far outweighed by the $17,000 cost, it's not even close. Let me just go through a couple of things Mr. Romano said. I don't think parking is going to be a major issue. I mean, I don't think necessarily that, that, I don't think a lot of people are just going to come and say, there's a trail there, I'm going to drive to that trail, get at the trailhead, and then walk through it. I think what a lot of people are going to do is they're going to divert from the 16-mile road path and use this one instead. People who want to have a destination can go there, but the vast, like, I've used trails, and, I mean, I've gone to all over the country to go to trails. Like, sometimes you plan vacations to go where they have nice trails. So, to put it in, to put it in your backyard, I mean, I've never understood this argument that we don't want trails close by to us. Like, that's what I do when I go on vacation. I drove my family four days to Montana, just so we could go walk around on trails. You know, there's going to be people coming from Dodge Park that are going to go down Dodge Park. They're going to get on 16 Mile Road, they're going to ride their bike through up, and then back around. You know, it's not that long. I mean, I could, on my bike from 18 and Shaner, I could be there in 15, 20 minutes. You know, it's, the people are going to be coming from all over the place. I don't think parking is going to be an issue. They obviously can't park on 16 Mile, they obviously can't park on Shaner Road. If they park on Brom, or if they park somewhere else, I mean, Brom is a pretty big road. It can accommodate a few people. Even the, like, Edison Park Trailhead, where I get on to go onto the Clinton River Trail, there's never more than seven or eight cars there, unless it's like a beautiful day in the middle of the summer, then there's maybe 15. But that's like one of the busiest trailheads in the city at the, you know, main trail. So, I don't see that as a big concern. And, look, people are going to litter anywhere. People litter in our park after every concert. Like, when we had 12,000 people to come watch Kiss play in the pouring down rain, you know, if you stuck around until the rain was out, there was trash everywhere around that park. You know, people bringing in beer, people bringing in cans, you know, just, it's littered everywhere. Like, are we going to stop the Concert in the Park series because of litter? Are we going to stop Sterling Fest because of litter? No, we're going to deal with it. No, we're going to discourage it, and we're going to clean up, and we're going to have, have people take care of it if we need to. We can create, I feel like we always just try to create the most unrealistic, you know, scenarios, you know, like, what if, what if I went to... scenarios, you know, like, what if, what if I went to the Edison Park Trail and, you know, I got a Ram 1500, I could just ram right through those chains, okay? And what if I bring a big old boombox and I put a dirt bike in the back of my truck? Like, I could drive my pickup truck right down the Clinton River Trail, couldn't I? Of course I could. But why would I do that? It's not how people use trails. It's not realistic. It's such an important part of what's made Sterling Heights a desirable place to live. And I see this as just a continuation of that and a continuation in a way that is so minimal to the taxpayers. I mean, it's like, they're spending $600,000. I mean, I would vote right now to spend $600 to do it with our own city money. So the idea that we're going to spend, you know, like, $15,000, that's, that's what, a 20-some-year, you know, we get 20 years free, basically, for this park or for this trail. But even if we paid for it, which I would be in favor of, we'd still have to maintain it. I don't know, I hope this passes, I really do. I love the trails in the city of Sterling Heights. I just absolutely love them. I like them across the entire Metro Detroit area. I wish you could just, you know, I wish you could connect Shelby Township, Sterling Heights, the city of Warren, Rochester Hills, Washington Township. I wish you could just go anywhere you wanted on a trail and it was all interconnected. And the more of this we do, the more we're going to get to that position because that's the way it is in a lot of other communities, and that's what increases property values. That's what increases a feeling of being in a great community. That's what increases your connection to place because you're not just stuck inside your home. You have all these wonderful things to do. So I really hope this passes, guys.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Yenness.
I know Councilwoman Ziarco told you to bring this home, but I didn't realize you live so far away. If you could call the question, please.
I was already done, Henry.
I know, I waited till you were done.
Okay. Roll call vote, Mrs. Ryska.
Mrs. Ziarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
No.
Mrs. Saroski?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Do we get Henry?
Mr. Yenness.
I apologize, ma'am.
Don't get the vote, Henry, go home.
I had to call you first, sir.
I thought there was a new rule. If you pulled it from the consent agenda, you didn't get the vote. Yes.
That's the new rule.
Okay, Mr. Yenness is a yes, so motion carries, or, yeah, item carries six, one. Thank you, Mr. Burton, and thank you, Mr. Langlois. Appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Romano. I hope we got some of your questions answered. Well, if it wasn't 10 o'clock already, and if it wasn't next on the agenda, we'd be going there, is what I meant to say. Next up is communications from citizens. Is there anybody who would like to speak on any item? Not on tonight's agenda, and I can't imagine what that might possibly be. Come on up, Mr. Matthews.
Good evening again. I actually was going to ask about that provision because it is a new year and that's a new first, I think, at least as long as I've been here. I don't think that provision would have ever been invoked, although it says 9:30, so maybe that changed.
Oh, it did change.
I don't have any children, and the closest thing I have is a pet, is a squirrel right now, you know, in the backyard, so I don't have anywhere to be. But though it is a new year, we still have some things that are not new, and dealing with COVID-19 is one of those things. And I know we're all tired of it. I wish it was gone. I wish it was gone two years ago. I wish it never would have happened. But since we went back to school in Troy two days ago, or yesterday, actually, I have had a quarter of my students gone each day, had three people in my department gone. And prevention is really the best thing that you can do for anything. And Councilman Yenness brought this up when it came to the fire inspection. Preventing the problem before it occurs helps everybody, everybody out. And COVID-19 won't be the last one. There will be a 20, there will be a 25, probably. We deal with the cold and the flu each year. But it seems like we have these things that we've become so accustomed to, they become commonplace and we forget, basic prevention measures. You know, four years ago, I don't remember walking around with a thing of hand sanitizer, but now you can find them every place. Everybody has it in the purse that I ask. Now, when I started teaching, which was some time ago, that was the year of the swine flu, if some people can wind back the clocks and remember that. And I remember that that was the first time in my lifetime when people started being, like, afraid of some, like, disease or virus or something like that. And I remember thinking, it really takes something abnormally dangerous to get people to take precautions that might perhaps be normally enforced if we're really being health-conscious. To that end, we probably should think about, you know, encouraging people to keep sanitization rates in a good way, ventilating places appropriately, vaccinating when you can, if you're not immunocompromised. And when you're in big crowds, wearing your masks and doing your social distancing. Because right now, our healthcare workers, as I'm sure Councilwoman Saroski knows, are very overwhelmed, and they don't need more cases from people that could prevent them in the first place by doing things that are very, very low effort on your end. It's not just about your health, but it's the health of other people. And like Mayor Taylor said, you know, this is a great place where we want people to live here. Being nice to your neighbors is one of the best things that you can do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Not? Close that portion, go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool?
Mayor, I could, I guess I should wait for the direction you're going to provide, so nothing further.
Okay. Mr. Kachubski, two items tonight?
Yes, Mayor.
And, all right. So let me, let me just get it started. I'll start with the deputy chief. How much time do you think you need to come back to the city council with an MOU to vote on, to approve, to create this deputy chief position?
Mayor, let me, if you don't mind, I can comment on both. I had a chance to confer with the Budget and Finance Director, Jennifer Varney. As you and Council know, we're in, we're putting the budget together as we speak. In less than 90 days, you're going to have the proposed budget. We will work to incorporate both of these initiatives into the proposed budget and, and provide city council progress reports each month. So at the end of January, the end of February, we'll give you a progress report, and then you will get the proposed budget. And if we can do it quicker than that, you'll note it in the progress report. But the direction from you and the council is clear, and we're committed to getting both initiatives done in the fashion I've outlined and gathering as much information as possible to incorporate a very good recommendation for council considering the proposed budget.
Okay, but if it's budgeted, like, here's what I, what I'm not clear about. You're saying that we're going to pass, you're going to give us a budget at the end of March, we're going to debate it in April, we're going to vote on it in May, and then it's going to be, it's effective July 1st, 2022. What I'm saying is, where, while that process is playing out, what about all the mechanics that need to happen in order to get a deputy chief position authorized by the union, get the roles, responsibilities, testing, you know? Is that happening in parallel?
That's happening in parallel, so I left out a key date. So April 12th is the first budget hearing. We will have a detailed presentation on each at the April 12th hearing. Now, assuming council, there's consensus, I believe there will be, that we should proceed, then we will proceed. We've done that before, even though we don't have to wait until the budget's approved in May, we can start the mechanics of it. In other words, getting the assessment lined up for the deputy police chief, getting all the mechanical parts lined up so we're ready to go. We don't have to waste time until the budget's technically approved. So, you know, I think that's kind of where you all want to be. I think it's expeditious. And, and again, I think the progress reports will show, we'll be able to update you on what we've achieved and then the steps remaining. And if we can do it quicker than that, then you always have the option to exercise the budget amendment.
In that process, when do you anticipate an MOU will be brought to council?
Well, you know, I think 30 days would be ambitious because, again, we've got to get two unions together. We've got to present the idea. We've got to first have good data. We've got to have the position fully defined. We've got to have our proposal. And then we've got to allow the two unions some time to review it. You know, maybe it's a quick decision, and maybe it takes a matter of days after they hear our proposal. But more than likely, it's going to take a few weeks for them to digest it and consider it. And so I think a more realistic timeframe is a good proposal in 30 days, that we'll be able to share with city council and the deputy chief, possibly 30 days to negotiate it. But in the meantime, you know, we're going to be prepared to incorporate both ideas in the proposed budget, have a solid presentation, and we'll be ready to go in April with actually moving forward with the mechanics. If the direction from council at that hearing is, yes, this sounds good, we like it, and the direction is clear, let's proceed with the perfunctory issues.
Okay. I can, the, one of the last things you said I think I can live with, which is that you can commit to getting a proposal to the union within 30 days, and then what they do with it, it's up to them. We can't control how long they, we can only control what we can do. When you say, dealing with two unions, you're talking about the fire inspectors and the police chief, or are you talking about the deputy police chief only?
That's a good, that's a very good question, Mayor. So we're actually dealing with three unions. We're dealing with the firefighters' union, we're dealing with the command officers' union, and we're also dealing with the executive union, from, from which, that's a union that the deputy chief would be placed into. So there's three unions that we'd be dealing with. So you could imagine that's going to require some coordination.
Does anybody, so I haven't really said it the way I was going to say it, but without objection, does anybody, does anybody have any objection to the plan as outlined by Mr. Vanderpool tonight with regard to the deputy chief and fire inspector positions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Yenness.
Through the chair to the city manager. Did you propose to the firefighters' union to use a retired fire inspector to do the marijuana inspections?
Uh, Councilman Yenness, we've had some very conceptual discussions. I would call them not a proposal, but just discussions to look at these more creative, cost-effective ideas. And I have to say, to the union's credit, they expressed, there was no opposition. I think they're willing to talk about these ideas. We need to get it done.
Yeah, well, if, we've had these discussions already in regards to the marijuana houses, and they seem to be open to it, I'm still not sure why we're in the position we are in today. And I have to ask, what happens if the union rejects the proposal? Are we going to keep kicking the can down the road?
Well, I'm going to provide you the progress reports, as we mentioned. I'm confident, you know, we can get there. And if all these efforts fail, then it'll be council's decision to hire the full-time fire inspector as you proposed. And maybe it's more than one, I don't know, but, you know, we'll, we'll get there. We haven't been kicking the can down the road. As you well know, we're probably one of the most aggressive enforcement communities on illegal grows. We have shut down hundreds of illegal grow operations, so we have not been kicking the can down the road. We've been incredibly proactive, thanks in large part to the fire department, the city attorney, whose, his team has come up with a very proactive approach to these, and also our building inspectors as well. So we haven't wasted any time there. We've been very aggressive.
No, no back and forth, Mr. Mayor, but we did that because we took a fire inspector out of doing normal inspections and put them in. That's why we've been so successful. We, we traded, we brought Peter to pay Paul to do that. Okay, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Ziarco?
Just, while we're working on this process, if you could get us a list of the companies and organizations that are in the city that do self-inspections and report to us, I'd like to see that report as well.
No objection. Okay. Do you have clear direction, Mr. Vanderpool?
I do.
Okay. Then I'll open it up for reports, new business. Anyone like to go first? Mr. Radke?
Just briefly. I was hoping, without objection, that Mr. Vanderpool could provide us a report on that, that pathway into the back of Moravian Park, and also the pathway into the ITC corridor from the west side. We talked about it before, Mr. Vanderpool, the streets escaping me at the moment, where they put the three bollards that block the bikes. Just so that we can open up some of these paths. I know that those three bollards that block a bike access would block a wheelchair. My mother was in a wheelchair. She can't access the sidewalk and paths and say, it's a problem for me. I was hoping to get a, it's a response to us so we know what's going on, how we can hopefully fix the situation. Without objection, Mr. Mayor, I'd offer that.
I have no objection. Any objection? Seeing none. Anything else, Mr. Radke?
Not at the moment, but we're going to have a long, a lot longer of a meeting, so I can't wait.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Yenness?
I just want to wish everybody out there a happy and prosperous new year. I think we all deserve it. And hopefully we'll, we'll see the end of COVID-19 and hang on for what's next. And I also want to say how grateful I am that we can have these robust and honest discussions on how we spend the taxpayers' dollars. And I think that's something that we all have to keep in mind, is that we need to have these discussions. The taxpayers deserve it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Yenness. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Okay. I will, so we are going into closed session tonight. I don't know how long we'll be in there, and we may return. So if you haven't had enough fun yet, just walk along and wait for, who knows how long. So we may return, right, Mr. Kachubski? So I would entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session.
So moved.
Removed and supported. Ms. Ryska, can we have a roll call vote?
Okay. Mr. Yenness?
Yes.
Ziarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
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 Mr. Taylor, yes. You know, Ms. Ryska, it's very good to see you. You're a little rusty. Thank you very much. It is very good to see you again. Okay, we are adjourned to closed session. Calling this meeting back to order, Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Resolved to authorize the city attorney to pursue all available remedies to abate the nuisance conditions and code violations existing at 14700 15 Mile Road.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.